May our town clerk Rebecca Vaughn please call the roll.
Councilmember Andrews.
Present.
Councilmember Bailey.
Here.
Councilmember Rivasio. Vice Mayor First.
Here.
Mayor Condon.
Here. Thank you, and if you'll all rise and join me in the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. And I want to welcome all of you. Our first thing on the agenda is open time for public comment. That is for anyone that has anything that they would like to speak on that is not already on the agenda. Is there anyone here that would like to speak to anything? Mr. Robinson. Oh, sorry. Sorry, Peter.
He moved slow. Were you ahead of him?
Yeah.
Okay. Thank you, Mayor Condon. Give me a few minutes. I attended the candidates' night last night. One of the questions that was asked by the excellent candidates there in the forum that was presented by the chamber in the town regarded the Airbnb issue of collecting fees. And I recall that almost two years ago, we had a discussion by the town council about Airbnb issue. We had an excellent report prepared by our planning director, and it reminded me that we do not have permitted use for Airbnbs in the town unless something's changed in the last two years, I'm not aware of. And I was reminded that before we launched into discussion of collecting revenues, I was curious as to when this was going to be coming back to the council for further discussion. Since that time, and I think included in that report mentioned that Tiburon, Belvidere, Sausalito, and Larkspur do not allow Airbnbs, although if you look online, you'll see they're proliferating all over. So it's sort of something that's grown on its own. And I know one of the questions was raised by one of the council persons that's not currently on the council now, who since moved to Sausalito, I think one of the concerns that he raised was about the litigation and the issues of some legal issues, and I'll leave that to our town attorney. But I did happen to note that the city of Hermosa Beach, recently there was an appeals court hearing in January of 2018 that overturned the appeal by residents of homeowners in Hermosa Beach that were opposed to the ban on Airbnbs in the city of Hermosa Beach. So it looks like that, and I know the state has looked at it and sort of not been in a position to make a decision about their feelings about Airbnbs. But in any event, I do have concerns. I share the same concerns that were addressed in the staff report about the impacts of Airbnb relative to workforce housing, rental housing, and also short-term rentals, which is the issue that was raised in Hermosa Beach. But in any event, just reminded that last night at the forum, and was curious when that might come back before the council. Thank you.
Okay, thanks, Jim. Thank you. And one point, too, that a lot of people are upset about is that it also takes away the occupancy of our hotels that we have in town. It's not on the schedule right now, but I guarantee you it will appear again. Okay. Good evening.
Good evening. Peter Chase, Corredore Madera. Unless something's changed, the two of you are still going to retire from the council as of the end of June, right? So that's right. So I just feel like I needed to express a personal appreciation, you know, for the indebtedness I feel to your guidance and stewardship, and the town owes you guys an incredible favor. And if it wasn't for Ms. First, I wouldn't be on the commission. So she inspired me to get active in a couple of ways. But I just thought it needs to be said, and I'm sure plenty of people will express their gratitude, but you guys have been an example of behavioral presentation and just all kinds of manners in front of the town. So thank you very much. I just wanted to say that.
Peter, thank you, and thank you in front of the whole public for all the time and all the commitment and dedication you've given to the town on the planning commission. You've been a real leader there. Much appreciated.
And I'd like to say thank you also, Peter, but I'm not sure your comment about me corralling you to be on the planning commission was a thanks or a blame. So we'll discuss that later.
Okay. Anybody else have a public comment? Okay, seeing none, we'll close it to public comment and go on to our presentations. And this evening, the first presentation we have is on the mobile shower units and a new homeless system of care. And I welcome you this evening.
Great. Thanks so much for having us. My name's Andrew Henning. I'm the Director of Homeless Planning with the City of San Rafael. And this is Karen Estrolia, the Project Manager with Downtown Streets Team.
Thanks, Andrew.
So we are here tonight to talk about basically two things. One is some of the overall systems change that's been going on around homelessness in the county, and then also more tactical intervention that we're now pursuing, which is the mobile shower program. And there's a way that Corredore Madera can get involved in helping to drive that effort. So let's see. This might not be working.
It should be. Okay. Literally. Okay. Sorry about that.
No worries. Okay. Perfect. So, as I mentioned, we're going to first start with our efforts around systems change. So to get a better sense of what has actually changed, we need to understand where we've been. So the first way that we like to start these presentations is by asking a simple question that I think we often forget to ask ourselves, which is, what would you do if you became homeless? And if you're struggling to answer this question, ask yourself this: If you were traveling through space and you encountered a black hole, what would you do? The answer to both questions is the same: You would try to avoid it at all costs. And what we're starting to find around the country is that studies are showing that up to 70% of people that experience homelessness, they're able to self-resolve their homelessness in a matter of months, and it's a one-time, brief experience. And so really, the question upon us then, as policymakers in the community, is, what do we do with the remaining folks that are on the street? And the reality is that a lot of the folks that are on the street are there for many different reasons. And as you can see, it's a job loss, it might be a mental health issue, but oftentimes, it's many of these issues conspiring to make someone in a difficult situation to continue to provide housing for themselves. And this has real impacts in our community. So as you can see, in terms of costs, so these are public costs around mental health care, criminal justice, EMS transport. The longer that someone's homeless, so this chronically homeless group that's homeless for a year or longer, the costs rise exponentially. So many studies around the country have shown that community costs can be $60,000 per capita to keep someone homeless on the street. Additionally, we find that community complaints rise exponentially into the chronically homeless group. And then also this group, it's important to remember, are also extremely vulnerable. So many studies have shown that this group passes away 20 years earlier than their housed peers from preventable chronic illnesses. So really, again, this was the key insight for us. It was really that 80% of our challenges were coming from just 20% of the homeless community. So we really looked at, how can we start to change this? And part of the problem was that historically, and this is not only true Marin, but it's around the country, around the Bay Area, around the state, is that a lot of historic focus is on this part of the curve. And the folks that are chronically homeless and almost by definition cannot self-resolve their own homelessness were not the focus of attention, and thus, a couple of things were happening. First, we had organically, over time, created a system that was very complex and convoluted. So we have a program now called the HOT Team, which is focused on outreach to people who are chronically homeless. And Howard Schwartz, who manages that program, has his PhD from Brown. He can't even navigate the system. So why would we expect someone with traumatic brain injury who's addicted to methamphetamines to do any better? So really, what we had was a vicious cycle. So you had people that were inherently difficult to serve, they were failing out of our programs because of even just basic program requirements like sobriety or calling ahead to make appointments. When they failed out of programs, they became more distrustful of the system, they didn't seek help, and they got worse. And this cycle repeated itself. Worse, we find that homelessness has a longitudinal bias. So you can imagine, the longer you're homeless, the better you become at being homeless. So if you were not able to quickly self-resolve your homelessness, you can imagine that once you were on the street, you would find other people experiencing homelessness, you would begin to adapt your lifestyle, you would normalize it's a very abnormal experience, and you'd enter survival mode. So when we hear sometimes that homelessness is a choice, often from our point of view, it's really just that people have kind of completely forgotten what it's like to plan ahead and have goals into the medium to long term. It's really people are thinking about, what am I going to be doing for shelter tonight? What am I going to be doing for basic hygiene this afternoon? And they're not thinking about getting back into housing or employment. So fortunately, around the country, there's a new approach to addressing this predicament, and it's called coordinated entry. And let's see, this is advancing. And the idea with coordinated entry is pretty simple. It's to basically, yeah, it's frozen. So I'll just, I can just point. So the idea with coordinated entry is pretty simple. It's really to start treating this system of care more like an emergency room. So you can imagine with an emergency room that if I went in with a broken arm and Karen came in an hour later having a heart attack, it doesn't matter that I was there first, it doesn't matter that it's Karen's second heart attack, or that she's intoxicated, she's having the medical emergency, so she's going to get treated first. So unfortunately, we've done the exact opposite in terms of addressing chronic homelessness for probably 30 or 40 years. And so coordinated entry works on changing that imbalance. So the way it works is that, is it working now?
Or maybe it's just working for right here.
Let's see. Oh, oh, God. Here we go. Here we go. Fixed. Okay, so the way it works is pretty simple. So you can imagine that this is everyone that's experiencing homelessness in the community. You start with, just like an emergency room, a basic triage tool that basically determines people's level of vulnerability. So our test is called the VI Spadat, and it's essentially looking at dimensions like, have people lost their housing because of mental health issues, chronic illness? Are people being victimized on the street? Do they have criminal justice issues? And the highest score that someone can get is a 17. So our goal is to go out and assess everyone in the community, and really, we're trying to filter for people that are 10 and above on this assessment. And the idea is that, once we have this group, it's not that we're not helping people with lower scores. Again, going back to our emergency room analogy, we're trying to get people that are having the heart attack in the appropriate level of care, whereas if I have a broken arm, I don't need an EKG scan, I just need a cast. And so it's really about both prioritizing people that are chronically homeless, as well as right sizing housing interventions, so we're not giving people more than they really need. So once we have our most vulnerable list, we put them in order, and starting with the most vulnerable at the top, and then we really just start working our way down the list. So if someone's a 16, they're the top of the list, they are prioritized for the next unit of permanent housing in our community. And we're making sure that as we go, it's not just getting people into housing, it's really providing them with the support services as well. In many cases, as I mentioned earlier, some of the folks, just an example of someone in San Rafael, a gentleman that was going to the emergency room six times a month while he was living on the street, once we got him into permanent housing with support, it went down to zero. And so that's real savings to our community and a real benefit for his health. So as we work our way down, eventually, there'll be people that might pop up that are more vulnerable, and just like a regular emergency room, they would bump up the list, we house them, and then we keep going. So over the last two years, I mentioned the HOT Team, that was really sort of the genesis pilot program of how we started this. Over the first 18 months of that program, we housed 23 of the most chronically homeless, vulnerable people in our community. And then building off of hot success, we officially launched coordinated entry in partnership with the county, all the service providers throughout Marin County on October 1st, and we have housed 30 chronically homeless individuals since then. So we're happy to report that, unlike the exponential curves you saw earlier, we're now exponentially increasing our housing placements, and we really have this amazing new system in place. So I say all that to say that that's really the new context, the new broader system that we've created. And so I want to turn it over to Karen to talk about how we're going about trying to get people actually into that new system of care.
Thanks, Andrew.
Yeah.
Karen?
Hi. As Andrew said, my name is Karen Estrolia. I'm the Project Manager for Downtown Streets Team in San Rafael in Novato, and I also manage the mobile showers that we've got going on. So let's get started. I'm going to kind of walk you guys through the basics. So these are what the units look like. We were going to bring them on tour, and then we realized that me parking backwards so the ramp could come down onto the sidewalk wasn't the safest idea, so I brought pictures instead. We've got two of these units. There are three stalls in each unit. The third door on the right of the photo is actually California ADA compliant, so we can serve those who are physically disabled or families. There's currently no place in our county that can serve showers to children under 18 who are experiencing homelessness. So this broadens our opportunity to serve folks in the community. The inside, just some shots of what is actually going on inside. They smell like new home, which is always fun. There's a toilet, there's a sink, there's a shower. You can see the seat there for those who need assistance. It's small, it's compact, but it definitely gets the job done. And then here is our shower crew. We've got volunteers on the left there, and a few staff, Jesse's over here as well, and myself. And then everybody else is a volunteer or folks who are running the showers. Will at the top, he's an operations manager, he drives the unit. Sean, he's the assistant below. And they are former team members from Downtown Streets Team, so they were in the experience, used our program to help get themselves stabilized and back into housing, and now they're working for us, which is really exciting. So I'm going to take you guys back, August 2016. It was really an assessment of, do we need showers? There's Ritter. What is Ritter doing for the community? It's really, really incredible hosting folks who are close by, right? It's a stationary space. So we did things, or I went out and did things like explored different parts of the county to find out what other needs were in the county, who's out there that doesn't have their needs being met. And one of the questions I asked is, if you do not shower as frequently as needed, have the lack of showers had an impact on your life? And 100%, the answer was, it's definitely had a negative impact. And some of those impacts led, were infections, bugs, they've got lice, they've got scabies, fleas, stigma. Of course, you can't walk into a coffee shop if you haven't had a shower in a month without getting someone looking at you. The compromised immune system, health was really low, and major depression was another thing that we saw. We saw open wounds on skins, and when I asked, well, where are you currently bathing? A lot of the folks said either the bay, libraries, businesses, they're taking baths in the bathrooms, and some even said garden hoses in people's backyards. So not a dignified way to get a basic need met. So then we started exploring, well, what's the point of going? What's the benefit of going mobile? It's really easily to scale. We can bring in food if we need to. We can have a clinic that comes on site and treats people with those open wounds. It's more affordable than the costly infrastructure that we currently have going on. This allows us to actually go where people are. If someone's in Sausalito and they're bathing in the bay, they don't necessarily have the resources it takes to get to San Rafael to the only shower, and if they do, they may not have the resources to get back to where they're sleeping at night. So this allows us to get to them. It also helps with eliminating loitering. There's a large density where services are provided, but if we can go to where people are, it allows them to stay where they're comfortable and where they've got their place set up. Also, we've had a really cool impact on folks who are currently living off of the grid. So there's been a huge population of folks who are staying in their cars, they don't reach, they don't access services, we've been able to get to them that way as well. Or folks that are really, really embedded in encampments, we've done a lot of outreach and connected with those folks as well. And I think furthermore is, we're building relationships with folks who are not on the grid. A lot of folks, they don't trust, like Andrew said, they don't trust because of experiences they've had with different services. So to see Karen popping through and, oh, hey, Joe, I'm just here to make sure that you've got socks, are you doing okay? Did you check out the showers today? Suddenly, I know Joe, Joe knows Karen, and there's this relationship that's starting to build. So the connection to services is really cool. Obviously, we've talked about the coordinated entry. It's getting folks really back on the grid, helping to keep them at a close distance. So if housing does become available for them, I know where to find Joe, he's staying in that encampment over there to the left of Trader Joe's, let's go connect with him and let him know there's something available. We've connected with veterans, we've connected folks to medical resources, and of course, it feels very natural because we are Downtown Streets Team, we're the platform that's, you know, hosting volunteers, get them back into employment and housing. But I think the biggest piece to this is, it's really easy to take a mobile shower unit and connect and have a conversation with someone, but you're not going to be able to get anyone to fill out one of those surveys unless there's trust there. And so Sean and Will, they have been incredible, poignant, station, place, you know, placeholders, excuse me, placeholders of our mobile showers, so that when folks do come to the showers, they're like, Sean, Will, I know you guys, how's it going? And they can check in, and they kind of know what's going on. And if there's somebody who's there who needs additional assistance, then we're right there to serve them. So trust is a huge piece of this that can't go forgotten. I wanted to kind of walk you guys through our timeline. We did launch the end of February, it was the 26th. It was a harrowing week of challenges that were unforeseen. However, we did host a shower, which was amazing. But March and April were really our great months of service. It was really, the focus has been on the data collection and site assessments. I'll talk a little bit about the sites in a minute. And then May, June, and July, our focus now has really become about expanding our showers. We currently have two sites that we're using, and we want to get into other areas countywide. And Ritter Services are phasing out, so it's really about getting those folks who are using services to use the shower services and become comfortable with that, what's available to them in their backyard. So locations and hours. In our pilot, we have had two Novato sites. One is at our Downtown Streets Team office, we call it the HUD parcel. It's on State Access Road, which is behind Homeward Bound. That's Monday, Wednesday, and Friday. And then we also host showers at the two community clinic sites. One is in Novato. The first month that we were there, we didn't have any guests, no one came to that site, so we put that site on hold. We still have access to it, but it doesn't seem logical to have a site up and running if no one's going to use the service. So we'll come back to it. But the other site is in San Rafael, the Community Clinic at the Health and Wellness Campus. And between the two of those sites, it's about 50/50 as far as which one is getting, which one is serving more community members, they're both pretty equal. And then, of course, the call to action is that, like I said, we want to be able to expand to everyone else's communities as well. Impact. So these are old numbers, which is very exciting. I put this together last weekend, and we've since then served over 190 showers with a few more participants. We still have four volunteers and two staff on site. We have nine folks who are staying in their cars, and they drive to the site, one veteran, one incident on site, and I just want to give you an anecdote. Two folks came in, and they were not happy with each other, and they got into a verbal altercation. The police were called, they came, they mediated, our staff on site, they've been trained, so they helped to mediate. And since then, one of those folks is now in our Novato team, Novato Streets Team. The other guy, he's actually on our waitlist, and those two have become incredible allies in their experience, so they're completely supportive of each other, and, oh, hey, man, I got a bike, here you go, or, you know. So they've become partners in this, which is very, very cool to watch unfold. And then we've saved a life. We had a gentleman bring in one of his neighbors, and he was really, really ill, trembling, couldn't barely walk, soaked to the bone. We bring him into the shower, and we pull seven layers off of his clothes to find that there is a layer of his skin missing between his waist and his knees. He'd been sitting in those clothes for months. We get him bathed, the guy brings him, puts him back in his car, and we've got volunteers that bring clothes and underwear and undershirts and socks and things like that, so we were able to redress him. The guy who brought him, took him in his car, brought him back to Marin General to have him treated. He had horrible internal and external infections, but the hospital was able to get ahold of his family who lived in Mississippi, and they have since then come to pick him up and take him home. So that was a huge, huge impact that we didn't foresee in the community. It was very cool. And then we've had 88% of our guests, who, I think that number is actually higher now, too, because we've served more showers, but about 88% of our guests are actually in the coordinated entry system. 100% of our guests are currently not using Ritter showers, another interesting point. So we're actually tapping into a piece of the community that's not being served. And 100% of our guests have said that they have restored dignity. Yeah. Moving right along. Current funding. So we received $140,000 from the Community Homeless Fund through MCCMC. Thank you so much for your contribution to that. Andrew will pull that apart in a few minutes. We also received $120,000 from the Marin Community Foundation. That helped us buy the two units, and then we had $16,000 left over, and that helped us with our startup, so we've got some supplies on hand. Quest Church donated some money, Presbyterian Church in Novato has actually donated about $4,000 EO products. They have donated body wash, hand soap, conditioner, shampoo for the life of the program. And then we were currently, most recently awarded, $5,000 from the Community Service Fund from the supervisors, and we were recommended about $23,000 from CDBG from the county, which is really exciting. And then I've got to give shout-outs to Larkspur. They donated our red truck that pulls one of our units, and the City of San Rafael donated a white truck to pull the other unit. We appreciate that, we wouldn't be able to get around without those guys. And if you're interested, we have a beautiful website that we've spent a ton of time working on. There is a blog that's on there, so you can read about our staff, there is a place to donate, there's a website that you can order goods and have them directly shipped to us, and there's information on where to find the showers if you see folks in your community where you want to send them our way. Please do, we'd love to help them. And with that, I'm going to hand it back off to Andrew.
Thanks, Karen.
Yeah. So the final piece to this is, as Karen mentioned, the Community Homeless Fund. So three years ago, through MCCMC, oh, man. Oh, it is. Fail. So three years ago, MCCMC, so all the cities and towns throughout Marin County, came together to create the Community Homeless Fund. And at that time, the idea was that emergency shelter was really the need in the community. So the rest program, Marin Organizing Committee, they came around and helped advocate for, and the MCCMC Subcommittee advocated for, the creation of a fund that was shared across every jurisdiction in the community. And the idea was that this would actually fund countywide programming that would help support people experiencing homelessness. So the initial commitment was for three years, with every city and town participating. So half of the money was coming from a proportional allocation, and then the other half was an equally split allocation. So each was $90,000 divided that way. And so in the first year, fiscal year 2015, 16, all of that funding was allocated to the rest program. But then in the subsequent year, two and three, the rest program ended up not needing all of that funding, and so there was a funding that was left over, unallocated. And so the MCCMC Homeless Subcommittee reconvened, discussed the options that were available, the showers were, at this time, starting to be developed as a concept. And so the group advocated that that funding be spent on the first year of operations for the shower program, and then the broader MCCMC body voted to approve that allocation. That fund is held by Marin Community Foundation. So tonight, and basically the past couple of months, we've been going around, giving this presentation to all the councils throughout Marin, and the ask from the MCCMC Subcommittee, a recommendation, is to renew the fund for three more years. And though, potentially in year two and three, that funding could go to other programs, it potentially could go to the showers, but the idea is that that MCCMC Homeless Subcommittee, which is represented by all cities and towns, would make a recommendation based on what the community needs at that time, and then the broader MCCMC group would vote to approve it. So that's the final piece to this. We did want to briefly just mention that, you know, the questions come up many times, well, why is the shower program the best investment? And really, I think it's kind of putting everything into context. You know, if we're looking at creating a new unit of affordable housing in our community, it can cost over half a million dollars to create one new affordable housing unit. We could also look at even, you know, converting existing commercial spaces into residential or buying single-family homes. Again, the cost is quite high. So really, from at least the city's perspective and the county of Marin, we feel like investing in that outreach, that entry point into coordinated entry, is really a great way to leverage all the funding from the different cities. So with that, we can turn it over to questions or public comment.
Okay, thank you, Andrew.
Yeah.
Really remarkable what you're all doing. From the council, do you have any questions? Diane?
Yes, thank you very much. I actually got to see the showers when you brought them to an MCCMC meeting a while ago, and I think it was in Belvidere.
And the torrential downpour?
Yes, it was raining. We all got showered upon that night.
We're going to do it, Brian, we're going to get there, right?
But, you know, they're clean, they look like they'd be comfortable, so great job. I have a question about the funding. You mentioned that the county supervisors approved a small grant through their, well, what was formerly known as the SLUSH Fund. But do they contribute anything else? Are they part of the core funding group along with all the other cities? Or is it really just the cities and towns of Marin that are financing this?
It's just the cities and towns at this point. The way that we've been sort of negotiating, I guess, with the county is that they've really been investing pretty significantly in the permanent supportive housing piece, the infrastructure for coordinated entry. They actually just received a grant from the state for $10 million that they have to match for services. So all those people that are going into supported housing, they need, you know, that support. And so the county's really stepping up on that front. So in this way, you know, kind of the ask is that the cities are helping to support the outreach on the front end, as they're working more on that housing and service piece on the back end.
Fair enough. That was a very good answer. That was a very good answer.
Any other?
Yes. Just to understand that the funding that you're asking for, the three-year commitment, that's for the showers? Or is that for the showers plus the housing element and the other stuff?
I believe that just the general funding request would approve three more years of commitment to the fund. The MCCMC Homeless Subcommittee is then making an annual recommendation of how that money will be allocated that the broader MCCMC group approves. And I believe this year, they've recommended that, for the first year, it goes to continued operational support of the showers in full. In future years, that might be offset by fundraising that the Streets Team's done, and there might be other priorities that emerge that it recommends funding for.
Okay. And then just one other question. Is that all right? You had a slide that showed the number of placements, and it was 23 or 30 or something like that. What, over a six-month period and an 18-month period, what is the rate at which those residents stay resident? In other words, is it 100% or is it 50%? Or is there, I don't want to use the term recidivist, but what's the rate at which people then leave the shelters that they've been, the places they've been put in?
That's a great question. So, I don't have the exact numbers on our local group. I can say, kind of anecdotally, working, you know, within coordinated entry and hot, that I believe it's over, at least over 90% of people that have stayed housed that entire time. And again, for housing-first programs around the country, that also tends to be the retention rate is 85 to 90% plus.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay. Jim, Diane. Okay. I have just a quick question. We have this evening, but I think it's for the next item, but we have our incredible DPW crew here. And I was wondering if, where you have the public showers, are they just maintained by the Street Team? Or does it involve Public Works as well?
You're looking at her. No, it's maintained by us. You, our, to the two staff, Will and Sean, are very hands-on. And if anything comes up, then it's really on me to seek and find resources. And we've built funding into our budget that allows for us to do any major, any repairs. So, but, I mean, for example, the first week I mentioned, we launched on the, at the end of the February, on the 26th, that first week in one of the stalls, one of the hoses in the back was like snaking and water was flying everywhere, right? Because the metal, I don't know, I'm a girl. The metal clamp thing wasn't clamped and the hose was going everywhere, and all I know is that I can't get the shower to work, and I was tired, and, ah! So, I called, I called the city plumber, who happened to call one of his friend plumber, plumber friends, they all know each other, and he came out and did it just to help us. So, but, you know, like I said, it was, it wasn't on the city to come and help us. I just knew Martin really well and was like, "Martin, please help. You know the, you know the water stuff. Please help." And then he was able to assist, but it was, it's really on us to make sure that they're up and running.
Yeah. Okay. Great. Any questions from our audience this evening? Karen?
Oh, your name's Karen, too.
Yes.
There's few of us.
Karen Kebosi?
Very good.
All right. I have a list. Wow. I took notes. The first question that I had, and I don't know if you're going to be able to answer this, but this was just the questions from, so when you make this presentation, at least somebody out there has this question, is when do you ever get to the people that are under a score of 10? So, you had that initial chart about that you evaluate people and you do a certain level of service to the people that have a 10 or higher, and it's, are the people that are nine to zero or nine to one, just, you're going to figure they're going to self, what do you call it? Self-resolve? Or do you just never get to them, or what? So that's a question. Second question I had, is there any concern that this service contributes to people becoming fixed in being homeless and not progressing to becoming out of homelessness? So that it, that it makes being homeless not exactly, I don't want to say convenient, but that it makes it more acceptable and, quote, comfortable? And again, I'm saying that from living in a house by myself with two and a half bathrooms. So, I'm, you know, out of my league on the thing. Third question I have is that, you probably said this at the beginning, this is a completely much more simple question, is I don't recall what MCCMC stands for.
Marin County Council of Mayors and Council Members.
Okay. And the next question I had is, are there any numbers about where, by community or by unincorporated Marin areas that homeless are located? And I know that there's a certain degree of mobility amongst people that are homeless, particularly if they're living in an automobile, but I was curious just to have some sense of that. And also, some sense of the gender mix. And I think that's the questions that I have. And then the one other thing is, is don't do that about the girl thing. Don't ever do that again.
Karen to Karen. Don't do that.
Karen Laund.
Thanks, Karen.
Well, briefly, if you Google Marin County Homeless Point and Time Count 2017, it has the full breakdown of all the demographic information you're talking about, where people are by location. It's the Marin County Homeless Point and Time Count 2017. And just to answer your question briefly, about two-thirds of the homeless community is male, about a third is female. And then, I don't have the exact breakdown per city, but I can say, speaking for San Rafael, I think sometimes the idea is that most people that are homeless in the county are in San Rafael, but actually 70% of the homeless community is outside of San Rafael. So it's actually a regional challenge. The other thing that I'll answer is your first question about the scores. So the idea with that tool is that each score range has a sort of ideal intervention. So people that are on a scale from one to five, let's say, typically can resolve their homelessness with a little bit of basic help in terms of, let's say I was homeless, I scored a four, I'd go to St. Vincent's, they would give me a list of housing options and kind of help me with my housing search. But, and most of those people are able to then go out and find their own place. People that are more in the six to 10 range, or six to nine range, they often benefit from having what's sometimes called rapid rehousing funding levels.
Something happening for the rest of them that is not 100% of your, I know I'm not on the microphone, but I guess, that's...
It's a good question. Yeah. I can, yeah, there's a recommended intervention for every level. The important thing is, so it's both right sizing those housing interventions, but it's also prioritizing a historically underserved population. And then your question about...
What was the second question?
The cycle, people getting comfortable.
Well, there was one before that. No.
That was...
Wait, say it again, though.
Would people get comfortable being homeless because of the showers?
Oh, no. They, I, I, no. I would say no, because, wait, read the question, though, because I had a point based on the question that you actually read out loud.
Thanks, Karen.
And for what it's worth, I've changed attire.
Watching you. I said, "Is there any concern that this service contributes to people becoming fixed or comfortable with being homeless? And that, that they're then not committed to progressing to not being homeless?" And again, I want to say, I'm speaking from somebody that has a very comfortable life and barely know what the hell I'm talking about.
That's a fair question, though. So, no. Showers actually are going to and have motivated people to get out of the experience, because it's very easy to go and have an interview with a landlord after you've taken a shower versus not, or an interview with an employer after taking a shower versus not. So it's actually done the opposite. It's motivated folks to get out of their encampments and go be with the people. Yes. Yeah.
Okay. Any other questions from our audience? Okay, then, I will close it, and I want to thank you so much. I did see, not one of the presentations, but when you, Karen, were describing what you did at, I guess it was at the Board of Supervisors meeting, and how few people are staffing such a magnitude of a project. And so, I really applaud you both on that.
Thank you.
And thank you so much for coming.
Yeah, thanks for having us.
You. Thanks a lot.
Cool. Appreciate it.
Okay, next, we have a presentation from Peter Brown, our Director of Public Works, and the accomplishments for fiscal year 2017, 2018, and what we're looking forward to in the future.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, members of the council. In my first six months, you've seen a lot of me and none of the 12 people that really carry the load of the department. So we'll be able to change that tonight. And while I'm honored to be here, I won't be speaking much about the department's accomplishments. I'm going to leave that to the 12 staff members that are before you, who are very capable. I did want to point out a few things. It is the American Public Works Association Public Works Week from March 20th to the 26th. The poster's behind me here. It's called "The Power of Public Works." And from the American Public Works Association, this is what they have to say about it. This year's poster, "The Power of Public Works," honors the vital contribution of public works professionals that they make every day across North America, and it invites the public to celebrate their quiet dedication and their indispensable influence to our quality of life. So I thought that was well said. Anecdotally, I often get asked, what public works actually is? And my favorite answer to that question, it's all the things you really like and value but never really think about. So, water that comes on when you turn your tap, and dirty water that flushes away, and of course, all the infrastructure that carries that water. It's about well-engineered roads that work, traffic signals that never get a day off, and utilities that come anytime you want. And lastly, before I turn it over to staff, I'd like to thank Todd Cusmano. He's given me the freedom to seek positive change in the Public Works Department and the guidance to be successful. And so with that, I think you'll be very pleased to hear from each and every one of the 12 staff members, and I'll invite Jared up first.
Madam Mayor, Honorable Members of the Council, my name is Jared Barrio, Senior Civil Engineer. I'm a registered professional licensed civil instructional engineer in California, and I've been with the town for only seven days. However, I'm coming with 10 years of service in the private sector, and being raised in Marin County, I'm really excited about the opportunity to serve the community of Cuarta Madera. Here are a few projects that I'll be working on. One, finalize the capital improvement plan for the town. Design liaison and construction manager for the new Public Works and Planning Staff Office building. Tamil Vista improvements and complete streets projects. Marin Royal, Prince Royal at Paradise Drive pedestrian crossing construction oversight, and the Marina Village levee storm drainage design.
Thanks, Jared. Fernanda?
Thank you.
Hi, I'm Fernanda Stefanic, Associate Civil Engineer. I'm a degree, a degree Civil Engineer from Brazil, and have been working a new engineer
for the last 10 years. I worked part-time for Department of Public Works from 2011 to 2015, and begin again this year in March to accelerate project delivery. I could not be more excited about the opportunity to serve the town of Cuarta Madera full-time and join this great staff with pending retirement of David Kent. I will start as full-time employee on July 2nd. And here are a few of the projects I've been working on. The sewer lateral ordinance, Danny, you all will hear pretty soon. Overview all sanitary projects, including CIP. Doing all sanitary sewer inspections. Working close with CMSA, Rose Valley, and San Rafael sanitary districts. Counter permits and customer services at the counter. Update all the public works and sanitary district GIS maps and data.
Thank you, Fernanda.
I'll pass to RJ.
Thank you.
Hi there. I'm RJ Suco. I'm a resident of Larkspur, and my wife and I are proud new parents to a boy, Dylan, who was born 11 days ago.
Oh, congratulations.
I spent the last 10 years working for the County of Marin Department of Public Works, and I'm excited to start this new chapter with the town. I'll be joining officially on June 4th and look forward to working with Jared, Fernanda, Peter, the maintenance crews, and the council. One of the reasons I became interested in working for the town was hearing Todd and Peter talk about their vision for flood control improvements and infrastructure improvements and the need for Measure F funds to do so. Some of the projects I'll be managing include the pavement rehabilitation programs, the Harbor Echo slotted drain improvement, Golden Hind pump station design and construction, and multimodal improvements on Paradise Drive.
Thanks, RJ. And it's Golden Hind, just so you know for next time. Samantha?
Good evening. My name's Samantha Baroy. I'm Customer Service Rep. I've been, two years is my anniversary last year, last week. And, let's see, I assist Peter, Public Works Staff, and the public, which I really enjoy. And, let's see, I, oh, and, so the fiscal year 2017, 2018, we have issued 214 encroachment permits, 27 grading and drainage permits, 38 erosion, 86 sanitary, and 89 flood permits. So we're busy.
Oh.
Thank you.
Thanks, Samantha.
Okay. Mr. Palmer.
Madam Mayor, Vice Mayor, Council, Michael Palmer, Superintendent, Public Works Superintendent, it's SC2. Been with the town for 12 years. Accomplishments for the past year is recruiting three new employees to join our team. I manage the maintenance division, work assignments. I hire contractors and work with Peter Brown on fulfilling maintenance and safety requests. Recently, been working on restriping intersections and improving safety and assessing pump station condition for possible replacements. I also help Peter determine when overtime is needed to prepare for storm events and manage rain runoff to prevent flooding in our neighborhoods. Thank you.
Thanks, Michael.
Odelon, you're next.
Good evening. My name is Odelon Velazquez. I have been working for the town for, town of Cuarta Madera for 17 years. I operate a street sweeper and maintain the vegetation throughout the town. One project in joint completed this last year was removing the embays with the town park and replace it with salt in the town park.
Nice.
Thank you.
Thanks, Odelon.
Guillermo.
Hello, everybody. My name is Guillermo Mejia. I'm a senior maintenance worker. Been working for the town of Cuarta Madera for 18 years. I do graffiti removal. I work with the flood control system, and also I train the crew in flood control activities such as gate maintenance and flushing of the lagoons and canals. I am one of the town expert in managing pump stations. One pump station that I worked on this last year was the Golden Hind pump station repair in order to ensure that the street did not flood.
Great.
Thank you.
Thanks, Guillermo.
You and RJ will be working together on that replacement at Golden Hind. Jamie, please.
Hello, my name is Jamie King. I'm a maintenance worker. I've been with the department a little over three months. Park maintenance is one of many duties that we do weekly. I walk the, all areas for trash. I blow all playground area, skate park, as well as pathways. One project I completed in the last three months this year was removing trip hazards in the town park and replacing asphalt in the pathways and improving pedestrian safety and reducing trip hazards and fall liabilities for the town. Thank you.
Thanks, Jamie.
Edwin. And then Gary.
and reducing trip hazards and fall liabilities for the town. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Jamie.
Edwin. And then Gary.
Good evening, everybody, out of council, council members. My name is Edwin Paez, maintenance worker. I've been with the town for six years. I'm a back home operator. I respond to sanitary sewer emergencies. Our main purpose is to keep the sanitary lines clear, to prevent stoppages from occurring. This year, I've also been working on installing and maintaining street sign such as Corder Madera Boulevard, Madera Boulevard, and Council Crest and Metal Suite. I also been working on parking, now parking for commercial vehicles on Nellan and Casa Buena. Thank you.
Thanks, Edwin.
Good evening. My name is Gary Downing. I'm a senior maintenance man, senior maintenance worker, I'm sorry. This is my 13th year of service with the town. I help Michael Palmer with assigning and prioritizing work every day. I'm responsible for training the crew in traffic control and mixed up regulations. Mixed up is the Marin County Storm Water Pollution Prevention Program. It's a hard one to say. Mixed up is the Marin County organization that makes sure that we follow all the rules for our proper discharge of water into the bay. I also make sure the crew is trained in proper cleanup of spills, i.e. sewer, oil, other contamination before it hits the bay. Mixed up uses our corp yard as a, as a standard example for other Marin municipalities to keep their corp yards clean and organized, which we're kind of like the poster child of the mixed up. One of the best parts of my job is getting to work as a team with the rest of the crew.
Thanks, Gary.
And then let's do Dave, please.
Madam Mayor, council members, good evening. My name is Dave Wetteroff, and I am a maintenance worker. I joined the team last July, and I've been learning quite a bit about our pump stations and flood control gates and how we use them. I have a number of pathways, bicycle and pedestrian pathways around town that I maintain and clean, and I've also been working with Peter in certain locations around town, adding some new red curb so that we can improve our access for emergency vehicles and for pedestrian safety. We just recently did some red curb and lane striping right around the corner here on Pixley at Redwood so that the elementary school students who cross at that intersection can be better seen by drivers. Thank you.
Thanks, Dave.
And then, last but not least, our most tenured maintenance worker, Vernon.
Hello, everybody. My name is Vernon Santos. Worked for the town for 21 years already. And I kind of divide my job here into two things. In the winter time, what I do is I make sure the pump stations works properly to prevent overflow. We clear drains in any degrees and rainy days. We also, we zip the street as well, removing the leaves falling from trees. During the warmer season, my duties change a little bit. I am the certified playground inspector. I check the playgrounds once a month throughout the year and make sure all the structures are in good conditions for all the kids' safety. I also control the irrigation systems. I manage the water for the plants and trees and landscape areas, including the grassages for our parks, and I keep the vegetation in our towns alive, including the beautiful hanging baskets. That's all for me. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Vernon.
Thank you. I just have to say, our public works guys are such a gift. I mean, really a gift. And I don't think, not to say anything about any other department, so everybody ignore what I'm going to say, but the pride that goes into everything you do is just means so much to all the residents, and that the town always looks so beautiful in the flowers and, and people come through, and that's what they see. They really see the beauty that is all from public works. And I just, well, you all know how I feel about you anyway, but I just thank you so much. It just means so much, not only just sitting up here, but just, you know, just living in the town. It makes me so proud, and I'm sure that I share that with everybody else.
Do you mind if I add one thing?
Not at all.
I wanted to piggyback on that by saying, we also appreciate everything we don't see.
Yeah.
We talked a little bit at the Flood Control Forum we had for the public about the fact that people don't realize how susceptible our town is to flooding because you guys do such a good job. Now, you know, nobody thinks about sewer or, you know, any of the other stuff that is kind of out of sight, but we know and we appreciate it. So thank you very much. You guys really do do a great job, and I'm not surprised that the corporation yard is held up as the pinnacle of what every other department should aspire to. So, thank you.
Thanks, Diane.
Yeah, I know that I don't speak just for myself, but for all of us, when I say we are profoundly grateful to you, profoundly grateful. I hear about it in two ways. The first way is whenever we have a major storm event, I get emails and phone calls from various people just about the remarkable amount of, in the, you know, the stormy weather, you're out there doing what you're doing to try to help repair the roads or the conditions in such a way. And it gets noticed by the people in the town who are, who are so happy that you're out there working in like terrible conditions to make it, make their lives better. And then secondly, just speaking as a town council member, there's an absence of complaints. And let me tell you, there is no hesitancy about our beloved public to let us know when there are problems of any sort. There's no hesitation. So the fact that we do not receive on a regular basis anything other than a sporadic compliment is an incredible testament to the diligent constancy with which you do your work. So thank you very much.
Thanks, Sloan.
I'd like to echo what Sloan said, but also in this council chamber, various other governmental agencies come in, and on several occasions, folks have commented that, oh, the town looks so good, who's the service do you hire? And I sort of look at her and I go, public works, you know? They're our employees. We don't, you know, hire out an outside service. And, you know, just going around town, it shows the care with which you take this town. And thank you very much.
Yeah, and just final words, I don't ever want to share you with any other city. You're ours. But thank you so much. And Peter, how you put him through this torture is just remarkable. In 16 years, they've been able to survive without having to be subjected to this.
The shirts look great.
Madam Mayor, I will say that in the last six months, they've been subjected to a lot of demands from me, and I just wanted to also take a moment, since all the council is in agreement. I want to appreciate you guys, I know the whole community does. I know Michael Palmer in particular has been thrust into this superintendent role, and he's been leading that crew, the maintenance crew. As you know, our engineering staff is brand new, so a lot of change, and they've been really taking it in stride. So congratulations, you guys.
And, and welcome to our new staff and to our new Dylan, who is part of now our Corder Madera family.
That was great. Great, that was a great meeting.
Did we all get to take the rest of the night off?
Do you have any more? Well, thank you very much.
Thanks, everyone.
Thank you. Thank you.
Do we need some lady DPW shirts? Well, the two ladies, Fernanda and Samantha didn't wear shirts.
Thank you.
Are those, Todd, are those new shirts? I don't know if they didn't wear them.
Yeah, I've never seen those before.
Can we get decals for the trucks that actually match the town logo?
You know, the decals are changing. I can get the decals. Cover it up. Okay, on we go. Now we'll move along to the consent calendar. The purpose of the consent calendar is to group items together which have already been discussed and do not require further discussion. They'll be approved by a single motion. Any member of the town council, staff, or public may remove one, and then we can reschedule that item. The only one I want to pull before we vote is 414, Approval of Letter of Opposition to SB 828. Does anybody else want to pull anything? Okay, if not, the only thing I wanted to pull is Rebecca, that particular bill was put on the suspense calendar, but nevertheless, it's going to be heard by the appropriations committee. So could you fax it tomorrow to the appropriations committee, please? Thank you so much. That was a bill that just, in essence, allowed that if property was within a certain distance of main transportation, particularly that that might feed into the ferry, which, transportation that came along 101, it provided an opportunity that building could be done without any regard to our design review policies, density policies, or zoning policies. And anyway, 827, which already had been dismissed, 828 followed it, and it had a similar gist to it, but reduced it to five-story buildings that could actually be as close as Madera Gardens. So anyway, we just want to make sure that that's stifled and that our town speaks to that. So at any rate, for our town items on the consent calendar, 41 through 418, if I could ask for approval.
Do you want to ask for public comment, then I'll make a motion?
Oh, any, yeah, any public comment on that one? Okay, thank you. Seeing none, I will close and bring it back.
Okay, and I'll move then that we approve items 411 through 4.1.8 with the addition of the comments made by our mayor.
Second.
Second.
Oh, sorry.
Councilmember Andrews.
Yes.
Councilmember Bailey.
Yes.
Councilmember Rivasio. Vice Mayor First.
Yes.
Mayor Condon.
Yes. Okay, and we'll move along then to the sanitary district item, and that is 42.1.
I'll move 42.1.
Do you want to ask for public comment?
Anybody want to pull anything?
Public comment?
Any public comment? Okay, seeing none, I'll bring it back.
Move 4.2.1.
Second.
Board Member Andrews.
Yes.
Board Member Bailey.
Yes.
Board Member Rivasio. Vice President First.
Yes.
President Condon.
Yes. Thank you. Then I'm going to move along to the public hearings, and I'm going to ask for my fellow council members to indulge me on a little change of order. First of all, if we can move 61.2 to hear that next, which is basically just going to be a comment, and then if we could move 61.1, which is the acceptance of the audited financial statement, if we could move that one, just following.
Wait, so what's the order you want to do it?
Okay, so right now, it's just to move 6.1.2 next.
Okay.
And then after that, the 6.1.1.
And then back to the regular.
And then back to the regular order.
Okay, so moved.
Okay.
Second.
Councilmember Andrews.
Yes.
Councilmember Bailey.
Yes.
Councilmember Rivasio. Vice Mayor First.
Yes.
Mayor Condon.
Yes, thank you. Okay, first of all, I just wanted to say that in regard to 6.1.2, this evening Sloan and I interviewed Carl Spursum for a position on the Tax Override Committee, and we both agreed and recommend appointment of Carl to that position. And then, is there any discussion on that? Okay, seeing none, we'll go on then to 6.1.1.
Wait, we got to vote for it, right?
Oh, we have to vote for that.
I'll move to recommend the addition of Carl Spursum to the Sales Tax Citizens Oversight Committee.
Second.
Missed it.
Do you have any public comments?
You have just been nominated to be on the committee.
For 15 committees.
But we're about to vote. Do you want to say anything before we vote?
In case you all didn't hear that, Carl declined to make any comments.
Okay, we have a motion in a second. Councilmember Andrews.
Yes.
Councilmember Bailey.
Yes.
Councilmember Rivasio. Vice Mayor First.
Yes.
Mayor Condon.
Yes. And welcome, Carl. Thank you for coming on board. Oh, thank you. And then we'll move on.
Let's go to guilty.
To the acceptance of Town of Corder Madera Audit Financial Statements, June 30, 2017, Comprehensive Annual Financial Report, 2016, 2017. Good evening, Daria.
Good evening, Mayor, and Town Council Members. This item is the presentation of the audited financial statements for the fiscal year ending June 30, 2017. You've all received a copy of the financial statements. John Cropper of Cropper Accountancy has been the auditor for the town for many years, and Mr. Cropper is here to make the presentation.
Thank you, Daria. Madam Mayor and members of the council, thank you very much for having me here tonight. I'm here primarily for questions. I've, I've met with the Finance Committee a little earlier today with Vice Mayor First and, and Councilmember Andrews. So if you have questions, I, I have a slight presentation that I thought I would go through. It keeps me on target. So if you want to start that three-minute clock, I'm okay with that, too.
Really? Is it really about the three minutes?
No, I don't know if I could pull that, but. There's, by the way, there's a wonderful vibe in the room for a council meeting, I got to say. I've been to plenty of council member, or council, council meetings, but great, great, great vibe in the room, if we could say that, although they did walk out on me. I kind of understand that. Oh, okay. All right, okay. So the council hires the outside auditor, the CPA firm, to issue a one-page opinion, which is basically in your CAFRA, it's on page one. You have an unmodified opinion, that's a good thing. It used to become, it used to be called an unqualified opinion. We have given, and you should have in a packet in addition to the financial statements that you have, a SaaS 114 letter, which is really a governance letter where the auditor kind of, on a template basis, kind of goes over some key issues and... of, on a template basis, kind of goes over some key issues and some of the sensitive disclosures, some of the sensitive estimates that are out there. You guys are familiar with how much of an estimate some of the, because I know you've had Bartell and Associates here talking to you about pensions and OPEB benefits. Those rely heavily on estimates. So, you know, those are in your notes of the financial statements. There's also, at the end of that letter, some journal entries. The town has traditionally had a strong finance department, people that have been here for many years. George Warman has been here before, obviously, me and probably everybody else in this room. And with his retirement, there's a great transition happening with Daria. And I expect to see changes, I think, not only in your accounting system this next year, but also in your report, which it's great to have new eyes. So George did a great job. It's a little late to be presenting June 30, 2017, financial statements, but that said, it doesn't reflect on the town's ability. The town has had a policy where people have asked for years, why is it so late? And I answer, because George really wanted it right. And he would spend a lot of time and extra energy, and I think everybody that you know George know that that was the case. One of the things that I highlighted here in this slide is GASB 68. This is something that's happened a couple of years ago, and we were all kind of watching the liability go up. And if you look in your notes, you can see the sensitivity of the pension liability, which is 17 million in the financials this year. There's, there is sensitivity analysis that we kind of discussed. You can see also the deferred outflows going up. And when that happens, because that's a debit, it tends to take away from the expense. You've got your pension expenses here being a negative, and it's timing. There's a lot of other things that you can look at in the notes and see some of the things that are going on, but I'll steer clear of that. We've got the notations there on the bottom, if you want to reference over to your, your financial report. And you can see the Pepper and the Classic and all the detail there. This is a slide I do want to make mention with next year. We, we are governed by the governmental accounting standards board and a lot of the things that we present to you. GASB 45 was a pronouncement that was a little confusing, and it had to do with the medical benefits. It's changing next year with GASB 75, which is going to be very similar to GASB 68. The problem with this, from a, from a council perspective, is the full liability was not on the books. You have about a $6.2 million liability on your books as a liability, if you looked at page 23 in your, in your CAFR. And you'll see that we need to get it up to 9.8. Now, this isn't unique to the town. There were past sins and things that they hadn't recorded. And so next year, you'll have a prior period adjustment of some $3.6 million that will affect your fund balance. And it's been a tough, it's been a tough time in the governmental accounting standards with GASB 68 and GASB 75. If you add the two of them up, I think we did it in the finance meeting, and we come up with some $25 million that's a liability set aside there. And it's probably going to go a little bit higher until it'll start to go down eventually in probably 24, 25 years, 2024 or 25. It's not necessarily affecting any cash at this point. This is the hot topic here, I've been told, with the Park Madera Center. The great news is, is that with the refinance, you're at, you're at a time where now it's going to start being a positive instead of a drain on your general fund. You can see here from the many little bullets here that we began the year with a $2.2 million deficit, and at the end of the year, it's up $268,000. So that was, that's kind of good news. So you'll, you'll see that that was largely because of the refinance, but there are other things going on there. And the details are also on page 130 of your, I think, well, anyhow, I know it's on page 130 and 131 because we just went over them. But this is a real, you know, this is a 170-page report. I put it on a page. And I made it in green and in red, not Christmas colors, just so it would be real easy here. You can see the revenues over the expenditures in the general fund, little over a million dollars to the good, right? And that adds to the bottom line. This is what the council budgets out every year. It's not the statement of net position. This one has a little bit more of your fixed assets and your debt. And you can see at the bottom, you've got a net position of some $51 million. And it, it kind of, I think it, let's see, we, yeah, wait, we didn't put that up there. The net position number, because if you look on page 23, you'll see the governmental funds and you'll see the enterprise or the business-type funds, the sanitary district being most of that, you'll see that because of the pension and because, largely because of the pension, and also because of the OPEB, you've got a negative in your, in your equity. And when you offset it against the pluses that you have in your enterprise fund, which is largely the sewer district, you're looking at about a million-dollar deficit. But that will change. That will change. We just have to have a little bit of time on that. And with that, I will conclude my comments and ask if there are any questions that you may have thought up for the auditor when he comes to present here.
Thanks, John. Any questions?
I just have one question, and it's just, it's not, you didn't say it, I just didn't follow it. Could you just explain that very last thing again about how there's a net deficit? First of all, the term, the word deficit, would you just define that?
Sure. First off, there's two ways of looking, well, there's a lot of different ways of taking numbers, okay? If you look at the net, statement of net position, which is the full economic resources of the town, it includes the roads that you can't sell, it includes the debt that you have, it includes everything, all the assets and all the liabilities, including the pension liability and including the OPEB liability. If you took all that and you were on page 23, you'd see almost, almost a $9 million deficit. Assets minus liabilities is deficit. Right next to that column on page 23, you would see the business-type activities, which is largely the sanitary district. You'd see almost an $8 million def, or not a deficit, but a surplus.
Surplus.
The two net together to be that, that number. So it is a little bit intimidating. Now, let me, let me do something fun, all right? Okay, for accounting, right? If you go to, to page 30. If you go to page 30 and you look at the bottom, you'll see a $10 million on, on your governmental funds. You see a $10 million unrestricted positive fund balance, okay? So what did I do? You know? Here, he sits up here and he says, we got full economic resources of the town, it's a negative $1 million. Then he turns around and says, look at the general fund. I got, I got good news. I got 10 million. If you try and bridge from the governmental activities on page 30 and go to page 23, you'll find that there are key things that make that difference up. I'm focusing on two major things, the OPEB and the pension. That right there is 25, that you'd have to take away from that number effectively. You know, so I'm trying to, to give you a little bit of understanding that we have two balance sheets and two income statements in these financial statements, and then we have a whole bunch of other funds. So governmental accounting, as Daria will tell you, it's not as simple as the world makes it seem. And there's 172 pages here that, you know, good time reading for those that, you know, want, want to give it an attempt. But the town is in very good financial condition. They've got, I've got the staffing, you know, Jana, Lena, Daria. You know, I've been impressed with Todd ever since I met Todd. Things are good. And this will, this is not unique to the town of Cordera Madera, what's happening out there. And you all know that with GASB 68 and with GASB 75. And I will say that, you know, the GASB, while they're at it, who knows what they'll think of next? But they're trying to help. They're not trying, you know, if you have a maintenance issue and you've been putting off maintenance for a very long time, somebody might need someday to come up with an estimate and say, you know, we're not funding our depreciation in our budget. Maybe some GASB guy on a committee is going to say, we're going to make you put that liability up. I don't know if that's coming, but a couple of years ago, this pension stuff and this OPEB stuff was pay-as-you-go. And that would be very bad for your, your town to have to deal with that down the, down the road. So the full accrual accounting is what we're talking about. We're not talking about cash-based stuff. The town financials, even though we showed that one lineup there, hopefully, if you understand and dig a little deeper, it's, it's okay.
Thank you.
Sure. Long-winded answer, sorry. Didn't do the three minutes.
Do you have anything? I have a question.
Yes.
Under the financial statement, it says that government-wide.
What page are you on?
What page am I on? I am right at the beginning on the staff report.
Daria's covered by her.
Daria's staff report.
Oh, Daria's staff report? I'll let her answer.
And it says that the government-wide statements show the town's assets total 89 million and the liabilities total 37, 763,000. The net position, the difference between assets and liabilities is 51,000. 51 million, excuse me. This represents an increase of 4 million plus. Now, is that, I understand it then, that we have a better year?
Well, now, what you're bringing up is very true. I went down through the balance sheet primarily. And so if you look at the profit and loss, you know, you take your revenue and your expenditures and subtract them, then you come up with that. In 2017, if you're looking at page 25, Daria, I'm thinking that that's what we're looking at, the change in net position, you will see that the bottom line went up $4 million to get you from 47 million to 51 million. So you did add to that. So if we were looking at last year's number, we wouldn't be looking at this 1 million, we'd be looking at, say, 5 negative. So it's getting better.
So it's an improvement? Okay.
It's an improvement. And if you were to, I, I don't want to just do the statement of activities, which is, I think, what Daria was talking about on page 25. I got to do equal justice to the fund basis, which is where I think the council would like to be. On page 31, and I did do this one, I did do this one, and I think I can go back to it. This one is, you know, your, your revenues less expenditures, and there's the green number in your general fund. So you, you did add to the bottom number. See, this has changed.
Microphone, please.
Oh, I get in trouble. Got, got it. If you take, if you take that, that revenues less the expenditures, you get the revenues over expenditures, like the net income, but it's not because we don't call it that. And then you've got some other financing uses of 60,000. Your net change in fund balance in your general fund is a little over $1 million, and that adds to the beginning fund balance of 7.3 and ties out to 8.3 on the bottom. That number actually goes over the balance sheet, and that's where I was talking about. Too much accounting, I know. Okay.
Thank you. Okay, are there any questions from the public? Yes, Carl? Can, Carl, can you step up, please? Thank you.
To do with sales tax?
It, so it's.
It's a joke.
Yes.
That was like an accounting joke, but it doesn't go over.
On the record.
I know, thank you. I like working with you.
No, no, it's just Carl Spursum, Cordera Madera, Lakeside. I just, I, I kind of want to understand, you know, again, I'm kind of a pension nut. But when I look at OPEB, I mean, I'm seeing the numbers go up each year.
Yeah.
And then we kind of have this idea that we're all good. So I'm trying to understand, how are we good?
Yeah.
And where's this number going to go? Because it's growing by millions each year.
Yeah, yeah.
So I guess I'm trying to, and when you throw in all the municipal assets, well, that's great, but those aren't leverageable. Those are underground, they're in the streets.
You want me to scare everybody, or you want me to be okay?
Well, no, I kind of do.
Okay, so, so if we go, we, we should go to page 75, which is footnote 14. And actually, I think we want to go, if I want to really do justice, to page 79. Go to page 79. If you look in the middle of that page, is it Carl? Carl is talking about that $17 million net pension liability, 17,275. And you see above that number, a number that the actuaries are using, which is 7.65, okay? That's the number that we've set aside. And like Carl's saying, it has been going up. It's been going up consistently because I think we had, we had a GASB, no, we had a GASB. Okay, so we, the pension liability went from 14 to 17, which is his concern. When is it going to end? Well, talking to Bartel, and I think they've given presentations, we're thinking it's going to end around 24, 20, 2024, 25. It's non-cash right now. We're funding it, but it's not, it's just a booking on the general, well, not the general fund, but on the net position. We're putting an asset and we're bringing up the liability. And so that number went up an extra 3. Pepper has kicked in now, which is much different from Classic. Classic is what was the problem. We never booked the Classic. We did a pay-as-you-go. And you'll see, and those employees that joined up under Pepper, they know the difference between, believe me, Pepper and Classic. If you're a Classic employee on a pension, you're, you're loving life. And if you're Pepper, you're going, well, this is better than nothing. So as more employees are Pepper employees and fewer are Classic employees, and as we also are paying for all this stuff and, and using, you know, the actuarial tools, things will get better. So it's not actual cash going out right now. Todd, do you want to?
Can you take me back a couple of slides to the operating budget where you showed the million-dollar?
Uh, are you talking about?
Show me the green, right there, okay. So this is really, it's a great question that Carl asked, and we've talked about this a number of times, but I think it's a complicated subject, and I just think it's important to say it as many times as possible. And really, what we've been working on as a council with the finance, finance committee is to really first focus on this, the general fund, the operating budget on an annual basis, to build the surplus, knowing that the worst of times, you know, we were losing 500,000 annually in sales tax revenues, 2.5 over five years. And so to build through our operating budget, just operations, doing things smarter, looking at overtime, how many employees do we need? How do we use contract services? How do we do things smarter? It's, it's really what Peter's really just presented to you earlier tonight. And to build that surplus, to consolidate when it makes sense, when it, when we can maintain and improve service delivery and we can save money. A lot of the surplus is, is the fire department. It's, it's over half a million dollars. And then what, what happened? We made our own, our own, our future, some opportunities for us, and then we took those monies, and again, we put them into a trust fund, right? And so now we're, you know, when you throw out that $17 million number, really, it's probably 25, $25 million is what we're looking at. It's probably higher.
Todd, can I add? Because you bring the 25 up, and I want Carl to kind of see above that number where it says 17, if you're making 6.65 and you use that rate, it is 25 currently, but that's not the liability we have up.
But, but here, here's the point that I think it's important for all of us to understand, to say, we're in great shape. Cordera Madera is in much better shape than others, but are we, are we excited about this? Absolutely not. This is, for us, for me, what I lose sleep over every night. And so. And so our plan, the legislature, state law, how much can we, we've done a bunch of reforms. We've done all the reforms you can possibly do as a town. You can't have a defined benefit program. You just can't. We're stuck with CalPERS in our situation. It's just our reality. And so moving forward, um, what can we do? And so we did everything we could as a town to do per state law what we can do. We reformed everything. We actually went above and beyond it. Again, the consolidation, we reformed from 3% of 55, 50 to 3% of 55. That is a huge long-term savings for us. We also, uh, by state law, we can mandate that our employees pay on the safety side, 3% of the CalPERS cost, the employer's cost to CalPERS. Our employees actually pay over half of the employer's cost to CalPERS. So we, we went to basically where Pepper's at, and they're paying half, over half of their cost. Miscellaneous is paying half of the cost. So we've taken it even farther than you can possibly take it. But more importantly, we position ourselves for the next evolution of changes. And here's what's coming our way. Get ready, because these are just numbers. I can just throw out numbers all day long. They're big, you know? And so really, when you look at that and you say, okay, is it 17 million? Is it 25 million? It's probably closer to 25 million today. Then what is happening, CalPERS is going to bring down the discount rate to 7%, which is going to raise that even more over the coming years. Then they're going to amortize our payments, because right now we're on a 30-year schedule for making our payments to pay off our unfunded liability at a 7% interest rate. Well, they're going to amortize that at 20 years in about four years. So what does that mean to us? Today, we pay about 1.3 million in unfunded liability cost. It's going to go up to 2 million. So now what are we doing as a town? We are, um, we are funding the pension trust. And so with some of the savings from the consolidation, we paid off our side fund payment that we talked about last year. We have some additional revenues. And this year, a staff in the finance committee is going to ask the council to approve a 1 million, um, annual expenditure into the 115 trust. And what that'll do is, over the next three years, if we can stay at that track, it'll allow us to control when these hits come our way over the next 20 years. Right now, we pay about 38% of our, um, per dollar paid. 38% of it goes to pensions. It could jump up to 68% over the next 10 years. By doing some of the things that I've talked to, talked about tonight, and with that pension trust, we can control costs at 40%. It's critical without devastating our general fund budget and making our own opportunities. And so there's a lot going on, and I, and I think this is a, this is a 10-year conversation with our labor group. I really look at it over the next decade of looking at the unfunded, the $9 million in retiree health that we have right now. We have about $2 million in our fund right now, our trust fund. We pay as we go. It's about 600,000 annually. And the conversation with the council and our labor group is, hey, we are more, we, we're morally and ethically, we've decided that we're going to fund retiree health. We've already reformed it, but we've, we have that debt that we've built over the last 30 years. We're ethical, we've agreed that we're going to try to pay that, but we're mandated to pay those pension costs. And so the conversation with our, our groups, our labor groups is, hey, at some point, there's a day of reckoning. Which way do you want us to go as a town? Do you want us to secure your, your pension cost or your retiree health? Because we're not going to be able to do both. I'm telling you publicly, we will not be able to do both over the next 30 years unless our, our employees help us pay for that and get to a 50-50 cost sharing. And so that's what we're working our way to. And one of the things you'll hear at the next council meeting is, right now, um, our council made a great decision a few years ago. You know, the amortization schedule for unfunded liabilities for healthcare, retiree healthcare, people amortize it over 30 years. And then they say, okay, what is our ARC and how much do we have to pay to fully fund it over 30 years? Our council figured out a way to pay that off in 14 years. So in 14 years, we're fully funded. But the conversation for council is that $500,000 annually that we put to that fund, we may want to redirect that or a portion of that monies from the retiree health fund into the pensions, because we know we're mandated to do, to control those. And it's an ethical, it's a moral, ethical, it's a really difficult conversation to have. We're having it now. It's important. We're not going to wait for it to come to us. We're going to attack this. And so we have a plan. We've done more than we can by law, because our labor groups have recognized that and allowed us to do it. And I think we have a really good team, uh, moving forward. So these are numbers. I'll tell you today, they're worse. The, the, the pension liability is worse than it was when we did the snapshot. But it's a snapshot in time. There's a lot that's going to change. I'll tell you right now that next year, when you do this, um, our fire will be part of the JPA. And there'll be some reforms that happen with that, and you'll see a significant savings. And so, um, there are good things happening, but yeah, this is scary stuff. It's complicated. And I know I talked, I'm talking a lot and I may have lost you, but the more I say it, the more we're going to pick it up. This is important, and it's important as labor groups, as our, for our community, for staff and the council. And so it's going to take all of us to, to really speak to this, so.
I can tell you've talked to Bartel and internalized it all. Your actuary, which is great, they're a great firm. And Todd, that was amazing, what you just did. That was, no, seriously, that, that was a lot. And, and, and I, I get the, the finance committee really understands this issue. I mean, the discussions that we had before the council meeting, they get it. And, uh, you know, these are the issues of the day. Just don't look at the government wide as much, you know? Look, focus on the, on, on the budget that you've got in front of you. You're doing good things, so.
Thank you, John. Yeah, we're really fortunate too to have a town manager that understands this stuff.
Yeah.
So, um, any other questions or from the audience? Yes, Jean.
Jean Greenbaum? I just want to understand how much of the, uh, the overrides, the sales tax override has contributed to the financial health that you're talking about? How much are we relying on that for all these other things, other than what we've told the voters it's for? And because it is in the, you know, it's been explained to me that this money is in the general fund and it can be used for anything, but, so I'd like to just understand how much of that is.
The, the number she's referring to is on page 25. It's called sales tax override. It's 2.47 million dollars. And so that is a general revenue that can be used for anything. And, and that's definitely adding to the bottom line to help things.
I'm sorry, on page 25, there's no titles on there.
You have to look on the left side and kind of draw with a ruler. It's not easy. Look, let's see, if you look at, uh,
Got it, so.
It's like, it's six down, five down?
Okay.
So look at the, it says taxes, and then you'll see sales and use tax, and then sales tax override.
So 2.47.
It's the 2.47.
But I'll also point you to page 28. And if you go down to assigned for capital projects, so that's restricted more, it's basically been assigned by staff in the council for capital improvement projects. That 5.8 million, a large portion of that is the sales tax monies. And it's, again, it's, it's something that the oversight committee has seen. And that was assigned this last fiscal year for those capital improvement projects. So it's not going for any other usage other than what we talked about.
So what he's saying is the revenue, even though it's hitting the bottom line, is hitting the balance sheet and it's being protected.
But if there's something wrong.
Yeah, it's, because you'll use it.
That's the discretion of the council. Since it's general fund revenue, the council can decide to use it as they choose. This council's chosen to not use it for anything other than that.
But that's how it's laid out under the law.
That's correct.
That's not an option Corder Madera chose. Under the law, that is how that kind of a tax works.
Okay, any other questions?
May I? I wonder if maybe Daria could address the sales tax override a little bit more and explain how that money is accounted for? What kind of reports the sales tax override Oversight Committee gets that shows every dollar in, every dollar out? Because I think there is some concern among the public that those funds might somehow be redirected to pensions or something, as has happened evidently in other cities. So, and I know we're being very careful not to do that, but I think some background would be helpful.
Okay. As John was explaining, the sales tax override is included in the general fund in these financial statements. However, on the town's own books, it has it segregated out into its own fund so that it can be kept track of. It's not commingled into the operating budget or anything like that. It's, it's its own fund that we can run reports on anytime to see both the revenues and the expenditures. And in terms of the reports, there is, as Diane mentioned, a sales tax oversight committee, which does get reports, which shows by category how all the funds have been spent. And there's various categories that were designated by the town council, which are things like flood control, fire prevention, um, streets and potholes, senior and youth programs, disaster preparedness, and what they were calling safe routes to schools. So the sales tax committee does get a report periodically, which shows both the budget and expenditures by each of those categories. And it shows a beginning and ending fund balance, so that every expenditure or revenue received is accounted for. Does that answer your question?
Thank you, yes. Thanks, Daria.
We, we talked about this earlier, um, when we were chatting about the committee. If in fact, we get to the unfortunate position where, yeah, we are going to divert, when's the sales tax oversight committee going to learn that? Are we going to learn it after it happens or before? Because if we're only getting reports about what has happened, what do we, oh, what's our oversight? It's done, it's already happened. So we, we just sit there, okay, great, well, don't do it again. How do we learn before this might go off the rails into another fund or to the pensions or whatever?
Do you want to respond to that, Daria or Todd?
Any sort of deviation from the adopted or approved budget would come before the town council, and they would have to approve any sort of change like that in the budget, which of course would be, you know, in a public setting such as this. So I guess that is how any member of the public could learn about it. And then it would be reported as such to the, to the sales tax oversight committee?
And I, and I just add to it, just as we're, uh, we're meeting later this week, before we get to a budget hearing, is to sit down with the oversight committee as a practice now and use you as an advisor, an advisory board and to share with us your thoughts and opinions, so we can share that with council or make changes as necessary. And I would say in that instance where, let's say, something came off the rails, using your wording, what we do is we'd hold a special meeting with the oversight committee, and we'd share that with you and have some dialogue and conversation, because as it relates to those funds, I think our staff hears the oversight committee and the community loud and clear is that before we take something to council, we want to be able to share with the council that we met with the oversight committee and share your thoughts with them, so they can make a good and informed position, decision. And so that's, that is the task. That's how we would handle that. And I think, uh, it's open for conversation and dialogue of what that looks like at our meeting later this week and put something in writing if necessary. I think it's important for, you know, those that hold our positions after us, it's clear what the expectation is, and I think that's important, so.
Okay, thank you.
May I add something? One of the main reasons the public is concerned about city budgets going off the rails is likely due to what they read about pension costs. Let's face it, the, the prognosis over the next several years for cities is not good. That is why we really try to be proactive in establishing the Section 115 Trust for Pensions and the Trust for OPEB. As you heard Todd say, we're socking money away so that as our, our costs, our expenditures spike when CalPERS points to us and says, okay, you need to now give us a check for this whopping amount. If we can't accommodate that in our general fund, we will have money set aside in this trust fund to help pay a portion of that. That's precisely what the trust fund is for, to help modulate the expenditures that are going to hit our general fund in the, in the future years. It's like our rainy day fund, but just for pensions and just for other post-employment benefits. So that is the way that this council has tried to protect the town from going off the rails over pensions and OPEB. That, that's really kind of something that we have gone to great lengths to try to protect this town from that. I don't know that any other city in Marin or the Bay Area has done as much as we have to really try to protect us from, from those hits from CalPERS. John, do you have any thoughts about that?
Well, yeah, I, I agree with you. You're very proactive on that, the cities and, and for that matter, the special districts that I've seen. I, I have not seen them. And I, I do think that there was study that happened. You know, I keep mentioning Bartel and Associates. You've got one of the better actuarial firms, and I'm sure that they, it's obvious that you guys have been studying with them on this.
Thank you, John. Anything else from the audience? Okay, and nothing else from my fellow council members? I want to thank both Diane and Jim for working with John on this. John, thank you so much, and Daria for really making this whole process, giving a lot of clarity to us and to our audience. And tremendous, I mean, it's a daunting chore that you've done, and really appreciate it. Thanks so much.
Thanks for being interested. I mean, in sincerity, I mean that. I had even bigger hopes when I walked in the room, but, uh.
They'll never know what they missed. Oh, thanks. And John, nice to see you again, too. Thank you.
Carl, I think we need a motion.
May I move to accept the audited financial statements?
Second. Thank you.
Councilmember Andrews?
Yes.
Councilmember Bailey?
Yes.
Councilmember Ravazio?
Vice Mayor First?
Yes.
Mayor Condon?
Yes. Okay, thank you. And then we will return to the order. We'll go on to 52.1, Public Hearing to Consider Introduction of a Proposed Private Sewer Lateral Ordinance as an Amendment to Title 21 of Santu, uh, of Marin County Sanitary.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, members of Senator District 2 Board. The item before you is an augmentation, an amendment of our current sewer lateral municipal code, which basically is going to focus on the conditions for private sewer lateral ordinance, uh, conditions. There's a couple of things about that, that I think I'd like to introduce the item, and then I'm going to turn it over to Fernanda, who's done a lot of work on this and is our in-house expert. The purpose is stated in the first two paragraphs of your, uh, staff report, and I'll summarize them for you now. The first is to decrease inflow and infiltration into our system. Our sanitary district system delivers sewage to, uh, Central Marin Sanitation Agency in Centerfell. And we had a test of that system in February of 2017. Those of you that remember, I guess it's a little over a year now ago, we had close to 12 to 15 inches come down in Marin County in about a month. And what that did is it overwhelmed, uh, all of the water and delivery infrastructure in the county. And the reason why we were able to test the system was that the volumes, and there's lots of different ways to measure it, but in millions of gallons per day, our volumes went up by eight to tenfold in a closed sewer system. So whereas normally we would deliver, you know, 15 to 20 million gallons a day, we were in the 120, 150 million gallons a day coming in. And that wasn't because people were flushing their toilets more because it was raining. It was because we have an impervious system. And so what that, what that caused was, uh, the Regional Water Quality Control Board found that, that the Central Marin Sanitation Agency was not, quote unquote, doing the proper treatment, and it, and there was discharge into the bay. And so there was fines for that. And all of that relates to the districts that deliver wastewater to the treatment plant. And so resultantally, when we were up for a new permit, the National Pollution Discharge Elimination System Permit that came in, uh, last fall and early this winter, all of the sanitary districts were named as permities. And so that became effective in March of 2018. So now it's not just a permit that's issued to the Central Marin Sanitation Agency, it's all of the sanitary districts that serve Centerfell, Sanitary District 2, and Ross Valley. Valley. And so what that permit says is that all of the capital improvements that are named in those sanitary districts' capital improvement plans must be completed by 2023. Five years, it's a good five-year warning. One of the listed projects for us was a private sewer lateral ordinance. And so because, as you all know, as members of the Senator District Two Board, doing capital projects is timely and expensive, and we have four other named projects that you'll see over the course of the next five years, because we're required to deliver them and we have budget to do so. The easiest and probably most effective decrease in inflow and infiltration is a private sewer lateral ordinance. So when we inspect our main line system, we understand that it's in fairly good condition. We, we do a regular job of that. We have a great staff that can take care of that for us. What we don't do is inspect private sewer lateral ordinances. That is the responsibility of the property owners. And so what this ordinance does is it basically brings Corte Madera in line with what most of other Marin County municipalities are already doing. It specifies clearly when those triggers, and I'll let Fernanda talk about those when she comes up here in a couple of minutes, when, when, when is the time to inspect a private sewer lateral ordinance? That's clarified in our new ordinances before you today. And so because of those two reasons, because we have the obligation to decrease INI in our system, and because we're a named permity from the Regional Water Quality Control Board, this item is before you. And I just wanted to, as I bring Fernanda up to the dais, you know, she came on board, as she told you earlier, in March. She works two days a week, and I asked her if she could get this ordinance updated, and she did it very quickly and expertly. So kudos to her for that. She's going to walk you through some of the process, some of the triggers, and we'll both be here for your questions when we're done.
Mayor and members of council, I review all local and regional ordinances out there. I actually work close with two sanitary districts and work for them directly. Sanitary District Two ordinance is based on the best practices out there. The ordinance has three triggers. Building permits over 50,000, any transfer of ownership, sale of property. Third, implementing a new capital improvement project for sanitary District Two or major road improvements, roadway improvements. If a property is triggered by any of this, the above, a sewer line inspection with camera will be required. Staff will review the condition of the lateral, and if work is necessary, a note of repair will be sent to the property owner with 180 days for compliance. If, we also are updating the sanitary specs to ensure the quality of materials, the quality of work, which license contract is allowed to dig in streets, to make sure we are covering everything. If you have any questions, please, or concerns.
Thank you, Fernanda. And then just in conclusion, as you know, when you read the staff report, you saw that the specifications and details were not copied and mailed to you, because there are 163 pages, but we did update those. We have basically, at the back end, and this was available online, we posted it to the website, all of the engineering standards that are required under the new ordinance, that it's basically state-of-the-practice. So we're not doing anything radical, but we are updating things that were on our books from 20 to 30 years ago that are not state-of-the-practice. And so I'm happy to say that all of the 2018 standards that are included here bring us in line again with, with what's happening in the rest of the Bay Area for the most part. And we'll take any questions that you have.
Jim?
Let me see. First, I'm not certain if I heard you correctly, that in February of 2017, the volume going through the central plant was up?
Eightfold.
Eightfold, okay. Do you have any statistics on what we shipped over to them during the same time period?
Yeah, we have, we have some data on that. So we have pump stations, and I can get that for you. Don't have it now, but I could bring that back at the next reading of this. It was pretty evenly split between the three districts in terms of number of households or number of linear feet of line that we have. One district didn't do more than the others in terms of delivery. And again, the main reason for that is because we have imperfect lines, imperfect private laterals, and rainwater was penetrating those and coming into the system.
Right. I was just trying to figure.
Yeah.
Okay, good.
Any other questions?
I'm curious if there's been any public outreach on this. And, I mean, I, I was reading through the report, and it's, there's a lot of words, it's a lot of detail. Where exactly does it say, or is it really just kind of like the fourth page from the end, where the $50,000 kicks in, or the change of ownership? I mean, I had to read through many, many pages before the first mention of that. It wasn't in the staff report, it wasn't in the summary. I'm just wondering how easy it's been for the public to be aware of this. And I'm concerned that we're jumping into this with a lot of people in town clueless because they didn't read to page 18 of a very technical document.
Yeah. Thank you for that comment, Diane. I think what I tried to do was, under the staff recommendation, I listed the main changes in A through E. So what I did was I said, okay, if you're a member of the public and you really want to know, what's, where's the rubber meeting the road, or in this case, where's the water meeting the pipes? That would be in A, which talks about the new definitions in clarification. The title transfer is B, and so we defined what title transfer means for the purpose of the ordinance, the types of waste that are prohibited. So before, we had a list that was appropriate for about 1973. Now our list is appropriate for 2018. It's enumerated, and it's in the red line document. Section 3 is a critical new piece of the ordinance that added, to ensure clarification of who district staff is and who the members of the public are. A lot of people don't know that they own the lateral that comes from their house. They think it's, you know, a town asset, when it's not. And then, I think the most important thing is when mandatory inspections are required. And I highlighted the sections for you all and for the public, 22.22.020. That way, any member of the public knows, okay, when do I have to actually inspect my lateral?
Okay.
Oh, and then, there was a real estate meeting that occurred, Association of Realtors, California Realtors, and this came up. Adam Wolf, our planning director, was representing us, and he did bring it up at that meeting, I think with the director, and let him know that it was forthcoming. And then the other thing that's probably important to keep in mind is that we're last. Everyone else has done this around us.
They're expecting.
And so.
They're expecting for us all the Realtors call the time, but you guys don't ask, don't need to?
Yeah.
We're selling property here, we don't need to do inspection.
And currently, we say no. And after about, I guess, we got the second reading and then 30 days to enact, so potentially in a couple of months, we'll be able to say yes.
Yeah, okay.
What's interesting about that is when my daughter bought a house in Corte Madera, she had an inspection.
She did have an inspection?
She did have an inspection.
That's a voluntary inspection.
And she had, and she replaced.
Yeah, it's, it's happening. It's just, since it's not mandatory, it's not happening with the frequency that we desire. There's a couple of other things. We have clay pipe. Clay was used, you know, 60 to 80 years ago, and a lot of times, all that's left is like the place where the clay pipe used to run.
Right.
And it's just basically like an open trough.
In our specs, accept clay pipe, so we can.
They used to accept.
Yeah, well, they used to, yeah. Well, the one right now, yes.
Yeah, okay, currently, we do, but.
Yeah, currently, we do. So sometimes we see, but we can enforce them to replace yet.
Yeah. I thought it was already in place.
Couple, maybe it was just because I redid my house, but I'm thinking, four or five years ago, weren't the laterals, they put in an inspection valve in the middle of the Oak's front yards or something like that?
Well, we have, we have upper laterals and lower laterals. Do you, do you want to speak to that, Fernanda?
The town used to do in some capital improvement projects, when we are doing the sewer mains, to replace the lower portion, the connection from your house to the new main to the property line. And we put a clean out there because we need to reconnect your sewer to the new main. So what's done was budget on the project.
Okay.
So most of the ones that had that was because it was on a project, then it was included on the budget.
Okay, yeah, that was.
Madera Gardens.
Deer Gardens.
Yeah, I was there.
We got stimulus money from.
Yeah. Yeah, we did that Madera Gardens, for sure.
Carla?
Yes.
I'm sorry, could you just explain, they get upper lateral, what did you just say?
So, okay.
Do you want to explain?
Do you mind?
Yeah.
Yeah, go ahead.
So the lower lateral is considered a connection from the city main, the district main, to the property line.
Okay.
Then the upper lateral is the property line to the foundation of the house, but not inside the building.
Right.
Outside, on the foundation.
But the proposed ordinance would only apply to the upper lateral, right?
The entire lateral.
Including the part from the main city line to, to the property?
Yes, because.
And so we're at.
It's private owned. Your lateral, the new one, is from the foundation of the house all the way to the connection to the main.
Including the connection, so that's the definition.
Including the T, including the T or Y.
Got it.
Yeah, so.
And then the other thing I'd note, since there was a few questions about it as well, is that what we provided in this updated ordinance or proposed ordinance is flexibility in terms of, let's say there is a property transfer, let's say there's a sale. We don't prescribe who has to pay for it. Many things are negotiated in prices, you know, fix the roof and all, you know, add 20K to my price. We throw this into that. And so the language that's in the ordinance now is, it is between the buyer and seller to determine who's responsible for the repair. And so I think that's, that's good, at least from my standpoint, that there's flexibility there.
And we also give 180 days to work on.
Okay.
I have another question. Now, the $50,000 threshold for a property improvement that would trigger the, the lateral inspection, is that comparable to what other cities have?
Yes, yes, it is.
Every other city?
Yes.
Okay.
They're in the same price, between 40 to 50.
Thank you.
Okay, any other questions? Okay, I'll open it to the public. Any questions? Mr. Kuhnhart?
David Kuhnhart, Hillpath. This is really surprising to me, this eightfold increase, and I'm just wondering, as we communicate with the public, do we have any idea roughly how many private laterals are so degraded or, or so open to additions from rainwater? It really surprises me. I know that we've had, in 22 years, we've had to do two repairs because we share a line with our downhill neighbor, and they had some problems in their garden, but it was all solid, either cast iron or scheduled plastic going into the, to the mains. Is it the case that there are a whole lot of just substandard clay and other open things around town?
Deer Gardens, yes.
Yeah, I mean, they're older homes that have.
So Fernanda, yeah, so there's a couple of things. I'll let Fernanda talk about it, too, but, but the one that she just mentioned right now, I think, is, is one that escapes a lot of people. So there's the age, there's the lack of requirement to inspect, there's the type of material used, and then there's what I call flora intrusion, right? So in the summertime, because we have Mediterranean climate, trees, they look for a way in their roots to get in, and they go through the joints, they go through the cracks, they go through the connections. They can't really penetrate cast iron, and so that's another thing. When you allow something like, you know, some type of PVC or some type of clay, as we currently do, that invites penetration into the system. And so another thing is, you know, we, as many of you know, a third of our community is in a floodplain, and we have settlement issues, and so those, those slight changes in elevation, you might not notice it, but a pipe will, and those pipes crack and break when they're under that settlement and change. And so this is a dynamic system. We think it's static, but it's very dynamic, and that's why we believe at the staff level that regular inspections are pertinent.
I'm moved to comment on, when I lived in Boston, we did a renovation on Pearl Street, 250-year-old street. And in one sewer lateral, there was cast iron, there was plastic, there was terracotta, and there was wood in the line that went down that street.
We actually have a wood pipe in Centerfell.
Cool.
Okay.
Karen Gribosi, I live in an HOA, so there's a lot of it that I think that, in people that are in HOAs, that are, that the resident proper is a little bit buffered from some of those circumstances, but perhaps not ultimately. The question that I had is, how are we going to communicate this to homeowners? How, is there going to be like some printed message that goes out and tries to explain all of this to people in a one-sided thing that they can assimilate, 75 words or less, or?
Peter, how do you?
Yeah, I think there's a, there's a couple of ways to do it. I think that we should definitely use, you know, the standard methods that we've been using through our newsletter, our next-door posts, those type of things will help get the information out. I think, you know, the most common way that folks are going to find out about it, if they're just starstruck, is, is going to be part of the $50,000 building permit threshold. So when you come in for a permit, it's, that's going to be one of the triggers to inspect your, your sewer lateral. And then Fernanda, maybe you want to talk a little bit about what other communities have done in terms of outreach and how their publics have become aware.
I think the trigger, the trigger most condominiums and homeowner associations actually sale. When one of the units are sold, is when we send, they need to go to the HOA to work with us to do the inspection, and usually when they get the trigger. And some of the districts do send letters to warn them, but some say they never receive it until actually someone sold the house or doing a remodeling. We do work with them to accommodate timing, timelineing to make the work, because it's a, need a lot of people be involved. So we work with them to accommodate, but the inspection needs to be done, and everyone needs, we need to know how the sewer is. And if work needs to be done, we're going to work with them.
And then another thing that's proposed that you all should be aware of, that Fernanda mentioned in terms of our third trigger, implementing new capital improvement projects, that is one where it is incumbent upon us at the staff level to, and I have a good example, we're looking at a complete streets project on Tamil Vista that'll come before you here in a matter of meetings. Between Madera and Pfeiffer, we will probably be reconstructing the majority of that roadway. And so more than six months in advance, we'll send a letter to every property owner along the roadway, saying that, hey, it's time to look at your sewer lateral, there's roadwork coming down the line, and we would give them the opportunity to get in, get the inspection, have us review it, determine what condition their lateral is in, and then we would build that into the scope of the project, such that those repairs could be done when the road is open, because we have a five-year moratorium, right? Once we, once we finish off a road, we don't want to go back in there and chunk it up. So, so that's a part of our process incorporating into our capital improvement program.
But the homeowner would pay for it?
It's the homeowner's property. It's their, they own it. They need to pay for it. That's true.
Can I ask a question? Peter, what happens right now if we're doing work on a road and it, and we discover that a lateral is in terrible condition?
We do spot repairs.
Like we do it, or we tell the owner, you've got to pay to have this done?
Well, we've done both. But going forward, I think, you know, because we have restricted resources and because it is private property, I think that defining the private sewer lateral term, like we do in this ordinance, really clarifies a lot of that. I think if it's a small job and we're already doing something, maybe on the main line and it's just a connection, it's probably easy, easier to pick it up. But when we're dealing with repair of the lateral between the connection to the main line and the foundation, that is the responsibility of the property owner.
But there's no ambiguity about whose responsibility it is. It's just that, as a matter of sort of history, we've been a little sporadic about enforcing that.
That's my understanding.
Okay. And that this only clarifies what we believe the existing law to be, and it brings us in a conformance with what all of the surrounding jurisdictions use.
That's correct.
Okay, we were in, we had opened it to the public.
Sorry, poor.
Mr. Robinson?
I got two hats tonight. Jim Robinson, 25 Ash Avenue. One is an advocate, one is a concerned citizen for Public Relations for the town. First of all, I've been following this since 2008, when they did a lower lateral project on Ash Avenue, the first three homes that were constructed in 19... project on Ash Avenue, the first three homes that were constructed in 1953, and I was surprised the town was paying for the lower laterals for those homes. Uh, we were told that project was going to be continued and completed in 2018. Uh, that was from, I think, Hoag, who's our public works director at the time, and then Nisha came on board, and she told us we'd done it in 2026. I don't know how many of the people are still left here on Ash Avenue, the Robinsons are still at the top of the hill, and we hope to continue to be there. I'm concerned that, uh, there may be those that have the expectation the town's going to do something about their, their lateral, and I understand the engineering, I understand the environmental issues related to it, but, just an example, the town has budgeted this year, uh, funds to improve Ash Avenue. So, when we send a letter out to, uh, those that live on Ash Avenue, uh, I suspect that 90% of them are unaware of this ordinance. The way I found out about it was it was listed as a future agenda item, that's how I found about it. And I follow all our agendas, thanks to our great city clerk that sends out the newsletter, our newsletter from the, from the town manager, so it keeps me informed and keeps me out of my wife's hair and her things. Two issues, uh, one, I would suggest, you know, we just had two very good workshops dealing with, uh, Measure F and the need for sales tax, you know, modifications, the storm drain tax. I think this will have more impact than anything we've done in a very, very long time from a public relations standpoint in our town, because there are seniors like myself that are sitting home preparing a trust fund for their three children and eight grandchildren, and I'm sure that most of them aren't aware that, uh, we're going to be required to have a sewer line inspection. Now, fortunately, we don't have any problems that I'm aware of with our sewer line, uh, but I do think that, uh, it behooves us to, uh, do a line inspection, find out where we're at. In fact, I would suggest that you look at what other cities have done. Some cities actually have a program where you can actually have a sewer line inspected by the town for free, and it's an encouragement for people who may not be considering selling their homes, so right away till the, the last minute to fix it when you're selling a home, fix it now when it, when it's, when it needs to be fixed and prevent whatever's flowing out of that sewer that's inappropriately being, going into the ground or whatever. The other thing I would suggest we look at is, uh, and I only looked at this, you know, very casually in the last 24 hours, I looked at Ross Valley Sanitary District, they actually have a loan program for the senior that might find out that they need to replace this ladder when they're doing a street or sewer project in front of their home, and they loan up to, I think, $10,000, it's like 3.5% or something like that. And I have no idea of its merits or how well it's worked, but I do think there are some things that we can do, and I think one is public outreach, one is consider, uh, maybe having our own program of sewer ladders being inspected and this loan as well. There are three issues that generate this inspection, it's in Section B in the, the redline portion, the one that affects the seniors the most probably are the, uh, issue of transfer of property title through a, uh, trust, also whenever we do a street project, and also upon sale, but I think with the price of homes here, I don't think we should object to an inspection being done upon a, sale of the home, although that's been a real bane of, uh, concern by those in, in the real estate business. Uh, I do share the concern about the, uh, issue of, uh, storm water, and I think it's important, and while we sometimes don't think about it until our sewer line backs, that we have to call Roy Sewer, Sewers, or whatever, whoever we call, I do look at my tax bill every year, and the one that causes me the least amount of concern or heartburn is our sewer bill that we pay, the $500. I think that's a bargain. Pardon me?
Your time expired about 20 seconds ago.
Okay, well, I'm almost expired too. Anyway, I would take a look at that too, because I think that's something a property ought to be evaluated by the town, so that we get our fair share of the cost of supporting the system. As our town manager very aptly pointed out, the, uh, arrows that we're facing of our budget, uh, I think that that's something the town should consider, and we did not look at that for many, many years, they had to increase it dramatically, and that's the last thing you want to do, is have the citizens faith of a substantial increase in a tax, particularly when they see on their tax bill every year. Thank you.
Thanks, Jim. Anybody else? Okay, we'll close it to the public and, uh, bring it back. Yes, Diane?
Thank you. If folks are wondering about the infiltration and inflow, the INI, which is the rainwater, baywater, whatever kind of water that's making its way into our sewer system, um, if you're kind of curious about the numbers, I'm, I'll point you to a recent report, uh, in the CMSA, Central Marin Sanitation Agency, um, agenda for the last meeting, uh, which was last week, I believe, week before maybe. Um, it was Agenda Item H, I believe, uh, anyway, it has peak flows that were measured in March of 2018 during a big rainstorm. Um, it calculates, well, it takes the average daily water flow, the peak flow, it calculates a rate and a peaking factor. Um, Sanitary District Number Two, Corte de Madeira, came in at 11.6, which was in the middle of the three JPA agencies. Uh, Ross Valley Sanitary was the highest at 12.8. San Rafael Sanitary was a little bit lower than us at 11.3. Then, of course, there was San Quentin, which is a very small amount of the flow, and they came in at a 5.7, because they hardly have any homes that they need to, um, connect to San Quentin. So again, ours was 11.6, Ross Valley 12.8, they were the highest, San Rafael 11.3. So we're right there in the middle, but this is definitely an issue that needs to be addressed. It's being addressed by all three of the JPA, CMSA, um, members, um, because of what Peter said about the flows during rainwater causing just a huge issue at CMSA, and in fact, um, we're reaching the point where we're kind of maxing out the system there. In comparison to addressing INI and reducing those huge inflows during rain events, the cost of actually expanding CMSAs would be in the tens of millions of dollars. So, addressing INI is really the smartest way to do it, which is why it was adopted into the NPDES, uh, permit, that we do this and try to come up with some other ways to reduce INI. And by the way, every JPA member agency committed to certain projects to reduce INI. That being said, and, and I support this, however, I'm concerned we didn't maybe take the time to do proper outreach and think through what the ramifications will be for folks that are surprised by this, maybe can't afford it, or whatever. So I'd like to make a few suggestions. Number one, we've got to come up with some outreach before this is adopted. We need to give people the opportunity to give us some feedback. Um, I would mention specifically that we should notify the town's HOAs, both before this is adopted, as well as after, um, giving them an update. Um, but I think we should also look to some programs that we might offer to, um, kind of help with the impacts, uh, on homeowners. For instance, Ross Valley Sanitary set aside funds for grants for folks that are replacing their laterals. We could perhaps look to see if we want to set aside a certain amount of money. Now, this would not pay for an entire lateral replacement, but it might pay for a portion of it, which might be helpful to certain homeowners. Maybe loans, Ross Valley has a program. I don't know that we necessarily want to go into the loan business, but if there is maybe a way that we could partner with them, where they service it, or maybe they have an outside servicer and we could do a similar thing, might be worth a phone call. They also offer a low income rebate. I don't know if that is specifically through Ross Valley Sanitary, or maybe if that's through the state or somewhere else, but I think we should look into low income rebates. Um, on their website, they also list pre-qualified contractors, especially if the project is going to be, um, partially funded through a grant, um, or through the loan program, or possibly a rebate. I need, I don't know much about that, but, um, I certainly know folks wanting to replace a lateral might not know who to call, so it might be helpful if we could help them in some way that, um, is within our legal ability to do. Um, and then finally, I think it would be a really great idea if we could encourage neighborhoods to come up with a program for inspections for an entire block, you know, or a whole street, and maybe scheduling repairs together, um, so that folks maybe could get a group discount. I don't know if we could encourage them to do it, maybe just give them a, a sheet of how they might go about doing that, so folks can do it on their own, or maybe if we have enough bandwidth in Public Works, maybe we could even kind of assist with, um, putting them in touch with folks and, and helping them to get a program like that started. But, um, I think those are just a few of the things we should consider before we adopt this. Um, I, I think this is a sensitive subject, it can, it, it's not cheap, um, and some of our homes have very long driveways, and I'm guessing very long laterals, and not everybody's going to have a simple one, so this could get expensive very quickly for certain homeowners, and I think we need to be sensitive to that, especially folks that are, um, living on a fixed income, and I'm thinking specifically they're seniors, um, but other folks too, so... Uh, so as much as I support this 110%, I, I think we need to be a little more sensitive to the community and come up with some of these things to kind of help present it and, lessen the blow. Thank you.
Thank you. Comments?
So I generally support the ordinance. It makes sense to me to do it under virtually all the circumstances. I have one problem that I can't figure out an answer to, so I'd like to discuss it, and maybe Diane, you have an answer, um, or Peter, or somebody, but, so I agree, if it's discovered that, first of all, I think we ought to be in line with our neighboring jurisdictions, that makes sense, and it doesn't trouble me at all. I think, um, the comments, uh, were fantastic by the public, those are just smart comments, but it makes perfect sense to me, if somebody wants to transfer title or sell the house or whatever, they should do an inspection, and if it fails, then they should replace it. I think if there are health and safety reasons, and, um, they do an inspection and it fails, they should replace it. I think that if it becomes manifest that there is a problem with the sewer lateral, they should replace it, and that it would be entirely their cost to do so. The one that worries me is when we're doing a replacement of a main, and as part of our town's work, we sort of stumble on the fact that, or we, we require them to do an inspection, and then it fails that inspection, not that the line itself has failed previously that we know of, or that, but it sort of comes to light as a part of our main replacement, and that feels a little rough to me. Um, if you're living on the street, minding your own business, and your sewer seems to work fine, and then, you understand they're going to do roadwork out front, great, and then you get a notice, you have to do an inspection, that annoys a little bit, and then suddenly you get a bill for $10,000 to replace the lateral, that, that would, it's rough. On the other hand, that's why, and I, I haven't made up my mind on this, Peter, but that's why I'm still trying to sort through this, if we're replacing the sewer main or doing roadwork, and we stumble on it just because our guys out there discover that the lateral is in terrible shape, it's a wooden pipe and is, you know, um, uh, and is falling apart anyway, wouldn't we have required the owner to replace it in that circumstance anyway? I think, which means that maybe the only additional cost here is this sort of extra inspection, so long as the threshold at which we require replacement would be no different than if it had, the problem had come to light under different circumstances, like a total failure, or health and safety reason, or whatever. I don't know, I don't, I'm sorry, I'm rambling a little bit, guys. I, I'm in favor of it because it's consistent with local jurisdictions, I'm in favor of it because it helps protect our citizens on a going-forward basis. I'm in favor of it if the citizen, if our local residents stand to benefit by selling the property, we have to protect our incoming residents from the existing conditions. I am in favor of it because it also provides a long-term incremental repair to our infrastructure, rather than a sort of like, wait till disaster hits to repair. The only one that worries me is people who don't read our excellent notes from Rebecca have no idea this is coming.
Madam Mayor, if I may, address a couple of the council comments. First of all, uh, you know, I think, I, Todd and I took some notes on, on Vice Mayor first, I think a lot of that is, is on the go, we can make that happen. You know, I would point out a couple of things in terms of, you know, concern, our median home value is $1.4 million in Corte de Madeira. So, we have more than half of our homes are valued between 1.5 and $5 million. And so, um, the average price, I, I'm very impressed that, uh, Councilmember Bailey came up with $10,000, says right around the median price.
I just made that up, Peter, I had no idea.
You made it up, and you were spot on. So, um, shorter, shorter, easier ones to fix, you know, can be 2,000, 5,000, 7,000, longer driveways can be in the 10, uh, to $20,000 range. Um, for those who like math like I do, um, $10,000 on the median home price is less than one-half of 1% of the value of the home, that the property owner owns that home. So, I don't be, I think we can do a lot more for outreach, I, I, I get that. I, I think we will still have, uh, people who find out about it when it comes time, when they get the notice, when they get a building permit, um, and, and that's just the reality of it, that's just how it's happened as far as lo, as long as I've known it. And then, to your last point, um, Councilmember Bailey, uh, you used a really critical word there, things seem to be going fine, you know, my home is in good repair, the road's in good repair, and things, I, I think that's the key word, things seem like they're fine. We inspect our lines on a regular basis, and we maintain the main lines with millions of dollars of Sanitary District funds, we, we don't have the ability to do that on private property. So, um, it is incumbent upon the property owner to inspect that, and so while they seemed like everything was fine, really what was happening is sewage was leaking out of their system into the soil, um, rainwa, I mean, and talk a lot about that, we talked about rainwater coming into the pipe system, but from a health and safety standpoint and from an environmental mitigation standpoint, uh, when you don't inspect and repair your privately-owned sewer lateral, you are literally dripping raw sewage into the, into the environment, and that gets into the water system. Um, and so it's, it's a serious issue. So, uh, I just wanted to bring a few of those things up, and I know some others have some comments as well.
I just, I want to add one thing, because I think, uh, we talk about our, the average median house price, but I think a lot of our residents, there's a good portion, that are house-rich and maybe cash-poor, and so, to your point, and I was, Fernanda was shaking her head, yes, when you're going down that list, she's well aware of the, the programs available in the county, so we will absolutely look at that, and I think with outreach and a, and providing programs, um, and, and bringing it back to the council too, and the community, discussing it with them of what they are. And if, can maybe cannot speak to it, I'll say too, that, you know, we have, we've been a little bit inconsistent as a, as a town, there have been certain projects that we've decided to move forward with, and we've talked about this, and we've decided to just replace everything on a certain project on a case-by-case basis, so it is a big issue, um, but I think there are some programs available that I think will meet the needs of this discussion at the moment, and we'll jump on that.
Yeah, I think too, that as far as outreach goes, I think, um, and this requires a permit, is that correct? If you're going to, if you're going to replace any of this, does this require a permit?
Yes, absolutely.
Yes, and so what I'm saying is that not only from Public Works, but I think that, um, it's also an integral part of the Planning Department, that when you're talking about various permits, that, to include something like this as well, just in their, um, outreach, so that, um, it's another avenue to get the word out. Uh, there, there are projects that come that are spec projects, or, you know, selling whatever that comes, uh, before them, and I think that, that that will really help to, um, raise the public awareness of this particular thing. Diane?
Thank you. I wanted to mention just a couple of things with regard to what Sloan said. First of all, all those leaky laterals, not only leak sewage into the environment, most of which is underground, but all the INI water that's getting in there and making its way into the sewer is water that we have to pump and that we have to pay to treat. So it is increasing the cost for Sanitary District Number Two. This is one of the re...
That's a good point.
And the burden on CMSA that is threatening to cause the plant to...
That's a really good point.
Not be able to handle the sewage. So, um, there's that, and then I also wanted to mention, when the town comes through with a, something like a paving project requiring the homeowners, that's, I think, the perfect time when we can kick in with grants and low-income rebates. And perhaps as part of the grant program, we budget not just a certain dollar amount for grants for homeowners throughout the town, but a certain dollar amount for homeowners that are being required to do this as part of a town... that are being required to do this as part of a town-initiated effort, as opposed to a sale, or some kind of a building permit that they're initiating.
No, I think you're right, Diane, I'm warming up to it.
Okay, and again, we can have not only just a grant, but a low-income rebate that maybe is tied to the actual cost. So if we have a fixed-income senior who has an $8,000 lateral, let's say they only get $2,500 from the grant, maybe we can give them another $2,500 through low income to cover, you know, a good portion of that, so.
I'd like to make a few comments on all these comments. CMS, SASM, Southern Marine, they do low-income loans. They help like with 500 from CCH, for televised sewer inspection, back to low incomes, and help with loans as well. Come for SASM, the treatment plan. Maybe CMSA can do something, so it's something we can investigate as well. Other comments, we are working on the specs, and we are updating what licensed contract can do this type of work, and we also working on a list of contractors to put on the website with. And we do, may need to work on the fees too, to adjust all their appearance fees and animal sanitary fee, to maybe do a little work on that. They all suggestions, and open for discussions.
I'm sorry, two things. First of all, I think Jim's waiting to make a comment here, but can I ask a question real quick, Jim, before you get in there? Would those, any of those things require us, or Peter, to modify what's in front of us, or should we be able to approve this without those additional modifications?
No, I think the ordinance is going to stay as it is. These are more like town, town programs that we can implement. You know, what Fernanda was referring to, you know, I think Jim might have mentioned the best bargain he spends every year is $500 in sewage fees. Well, you know, if those went, you know, town-wide to 545, or 580, or 620, or something like that, then I think that's one way of providing a lot of financing for the programs that you're mentioning. We don't really have the capacity to pay for a lot of that stuff in the current budget structure, but I know Fernanda's familiar with a lot of programs that really look to address, especially the town-initiated projects, you know, whereby the town includes that in part of its capital improvement, but that they get the money back from, you know, fees from private.
Yeah, they, they increase the fee, the animal fee, than you were talking, then it's very low here, which is very low compared to others. They make the calculus, so we're going to do a CIP, we're going to spend 100 grand. So they divide that by the use, for the water use, increase the rate. So the laterals that are on CIP, which is harder to get people accepted, because there's not much money, they get back refund from this where annual fee, a portion of them go to the improvements. Is option, and we left that open on the ordinance. If you read, there is kind of, you can read that we can work, all depends on the budget and how we're going to work. So we can make the decision from there, it would not change our ordinance.
Okay.
Okay, good. Jim?
It's already been covered.
Okay. Okay, Diane, if there are no other comments?
Madam Mayor, if you do entertain a motion, we'd like you to put into that flexibility for any, say clerical or grammatical changes. We did find a few things that wouldn't be substantive, and of course, this will come back to you next month, and I think it's appropriate, in any form, if it does come back to you next month, to address maybe some specific programs that we heard from you all in terms of suggestions.
Okay, very good. Okay, so do I have a motion from anyone? Yes, Jim?
Okay, pass this now, don't get back to us with those programs. Can the new council do the second reading, if necessary?
It's up to the council how you want to proceed here. You can go ahead and pass your ordinance, which of course would take two readings. The second reading could be as early as the first meeting in June, and these, the ordinance then would not take effect for 30 days. You could also proceed either at the next meeting, or the meeting after that, to have staff come forward with the types of programs that were being discussed here, and implement those separately. Alternatively, you could not pass the ordinance, you could not introduce the ordinance today and wait for staff to come forward, and then proceed with doing that in the future when you have more information. But there's nothing in the ordinance that would require those programs to be laid out specifically in the ordinance. They can be adopted as a city program separate from the ordinance.
I guess my real question was, is in terms of overlapping the, you know, two councils, if we pass it for first reading, could this next council do the second reading, or do we have to do both during our term?
You don't have to do both during your term, however, you have an extra month in there, so it doesn't necessarily need to straddle the two councils, but certainly, in theory, if you introduced and you had not yet adopted, it would be, the new council would then have in front of it whether to adopt or not. And of course, the new council could always decide to revisit an ordinance, even if you had adopted.
Yeah, and the next meeting is the day before the election.
Right, and then, are we having another meeting in June? Second week? Okay, all right.
So at this point, you will, you will seat your new council on July the 3rd.
Okay.
I'm just wondering what my fellow council members are interested in seeing in terms of these programs. I would think we would need to fund these programs, so we would need money in the budget, and we're kind of running up on the budget timing here. So is it, do we still have time? Maybe this is a question for Todd, do we still have time to put some money in the budget to fund a lateral program of some sort, and maybe we can work out the details later, whether it's just a grant, a low-income rebate, a loan, or whatever?
Or alternatively, as Fernanda pointed out, to put it on to CMSA.
Yeah, we'll look at all options, and I'll work with Peter, and we could, we definitely have time to come back to you next meeting and put something in the budget. It doesn't mean we have to spend it, but we can have a placeholder there moving forward. But we'll look at all programs.
As your CMSA representative, I do not believe CMSA would get involved in any kind of a grant program for laterals. They don't do collection, they do water treatment. So it's on sanitary district two, the collection agency, to kind of handle the laterals issue.
Yeah, I just did notes, and SASM participated if, you know.
Yeah, I don't know, but I know SASM is doing for all their members. I don't know how they do, where they get the money for, I don't know that, but maybe we can go to the website, we'll have something there.
Or potentially, we could partner with Ross Valley, maybe, I don't know.
And a lot of this really gets to the fee schedule. We have an outdated fee schedule, you know, we're probably the lowest in the area. So my, my initial take on it, is as we start to put together the budget, is that, you know, we revisit the fee schedule for this, and I do think that, you know, maybe some seed money in terms of, you know, taking sanitary district due budget and creating a line item for, you know, just private sewer lateral grants, we can call it, as a line item. How, the details of which, I think we need some time to figure out, but we're certainly within the window.
Great, thank you very much for that. I would also say that I know that CMSA has approved a revenue budget for spanning several years that has an annual increase of 3.5% approximately year over year. We've discussed that here, so we are facing some increases in CMSA fees for water treatment, so that definitely should be included in any kind of a fee increase. Sorry, folks.
So I'll make a motion then, that we introduce and waive the first reading of ordinance number 45, sanitary, which is an amendment to Title 21 of sanitary district number two, regarding use and maintenance of private sewer laterals, and et cetera, et cetera.
With, with corrections that have no substantive implications.
Okay, so moved.
That's good.
Yes.
Councilmember Bailey?
Yes.
Councilmember Ravazia?
Vice Mayor First?
Yes.
Mayor Condon?
Yes.
And so the second motion then is to approve Resolution 01/2018, adopting revised standards, standard specifications for sanitary sewer improvements, and repealing standard specs dated May 2012, currently in effect. Is that right?
Second.
Councilmember Andrews?
Yes.
Councilmember Bailey?
Yes.
Councilmember Ravazia?
Vice Mayor First?
Yes.
Mayor Condon?
Yes. Okay, thank you. Folks, let's continue on to 61.3, approved letter of opposition to AB 1912, that was the Rodriguez bill, public employees' retirement joint powers agreements. And we have a letter before us. Is there?
Yeah, Madam Mayor?
Yeah.
Jump in?
Yeah, would you, please?
Sure. So I'm going to, I'll start it off by turning it over to Councilman Bailey, who was kind enough to draft this outstanding letter, and so I'll let him start it off, and then I'd like to provide an update on the legislation and a meeting we had with the CalPERS board this afternoon.
So my apologies for the lateness of this draft, guys, I didn't get it to the town until just yesterday, so I'm sorry. However, my goal here was to simply take the longer letter and boil it down into simpler language. I noticed at least one grammatical problem when I went over it, but substantively, I think it, it gets most of the messages, but I know both Diane, both you, and actually all three of you, all three of you had comments about various things. I don't know if I hit the point or two that each of you wanted to do. I have no pride at all if you want to change any part of it at all. This was just a, my own draft to make it a little punchier than what was provided in the proposed letter.
Okay, thanks, Sloan. And Todd, did you want to report it out today?
I just, because we really haven't had a public conversation about this, but really, our JPA application, along with our friends in Belmont, and is it Sam Belmont, and I forget the other three agencies, we were the first applications to go through with a, with a JPA application with CalPERS after the LA Works incident down south. And so our JPA has been held up over that, and really what happened over a conversation of eight months with CalPERS, they really required the joint and several liability language. Am I saying that right?
Yep.
And really that.
Retroactive.
Retroactive, and so that's where it started, and so to give like perspective of how we've responded to that, and really didn't share it publicly at the time because we were in negotiations with CalPERS, if you took the town of San Onomoh right now, and they're part of two JPAs, Ross Valley Fire and Central Mountain Police Authority, as well as their own pension obligations for the town of San Onomoh, it's about 30 to 35 million dollars is their liability, and their retiree health cost, because that's part of this. It's both OPEB and pension, it's about 35 million. If you were to take that joint several language, and it gets passed, and it's retroactive, their unfunded liability.
Source.
It's 100 million dollars. So they would hit their debt limits, their credit rating, their debt rating, their ability to borrow, it would just devastate, it's devastating to all of us, and I use San Onomoh as an example because they're a part of just two JPAs. Our unfunded liabilities could potentially go up 50 million. So obviously, we put a pause to that, well, Teresa did, and jumped in and said, "We're not doing that." And so as we started to negotiate, we came to a point where they said, "Okay, it won't be retroactive, it'll be going forward." And we said, "Okay," and all liabilities though, so that's OPEB, civil liabilities, everything. And so we analyzed that, and we didn't, we didn't bring that to council at the time, because we felt uncomfortable where CalPERS was headed, because what they did at the same time, as they started negotiating, was the SEIU. They had SEIU basically author, they authored the language, but they had SEIU sign off on it. And so the SEIU labor group pushed that bill, where then ultimately, it was supported by Rodriguez. And so that's how this, this really came about, and we've always been involved in part of this discussion. Some things have changed, so as it's gone through the committees, over the last nine days, there were, there were some key amendments to this language that really came to light today. We went before the CalPERS board meeting, Nancy Bennett and the League of California Cities took 12 members in the state, Dan Schwartz and I were two of them, and we got to testify before the CalPERS board. And really, our request to them was to take no action. You know, we didn't want, the staff was asking them to endorse it, we asked them to take no action, and allow us to continue this conversation with the author, as well as every committee that it goes through. And so some key points have been changed, have been amended, which are critical. And so one of them is that the retroactivity has been amended, so there's no more retroactivity. So that's a real big positive, it's huge, because you can't, it would just, if it was retroactive to current JPAs and future JPAs, it would destroy every JPA. I would have to come back to you and recommend, we undo everything, because it would just, you couldn't, the ramifications to our town, it's just devastating, and it's core services. So I think Councilman Bailey's letter hits those points. It's succinct, and it's really what I focused on. These are core, essential services, public safety services that we provide. And so what we did is, I gave examples for the committee. I didn't give the 100-person JPA, you know, examples, I gave the everyday, San Onomoh, Corder Madera, Larksburg examples, and what that would do to us, and what it means to our county, and that we wanted to put a face and a name to the group, you know, that devastates, you know, this essential service. And I also pointed, moving forward, because the League of California Cities is softening a little bit with, well, if it's joint several moving forward, that's a huge win, we'll think about that. And we can't, and really, my example to them, and I think this letter points it out, is that, here we are, and we move forward. That's great, so we form our JPA, and this has kind of come before us, because we're going to have a, there's some strategy to this and how we move forward, but let's say, we say, "Okay, moving forward, we're joint several." Well, we already know that today, it's not, the discount rate isn't even what it should be, right? It should be closer to six, so what is that every year that we go forward, right? It's going to just expand and grow, and so there's two ways to look at it for the council. One way is, and for me, when I first heard it, I said, "Well, you know what, I don't like it, and we fight it." But at the end of the day, what does that force us to do? It forces us to do what we're doing in the town of Corder Madera, and it would force Larksburg to do what we're doing in the town of Corder Madera, and that's to say, "We're joint several." Okay, you know, moving forward. But for us to put the mechanisms in place to make sure that we don't grow unfunded liability, that discount rate is what it should, ever it should be, whatever that board decides, that it forces us to do the 115 trust, and to do the job of government moving forward, not rely on CalPERS. It's going to be hard for us to come to, but I, I think that's where we're headed.
But the, the problem as I see it, is even if you eliminate the retroactivity of the obligation, a joint and several obligation means that we become the insurer of all of the other members of any joint powers authority that we are with. So even if we no longer have to bear their debts and obligations prior to the day this becomes enabled, we begin to incur, accrue, whatever, owe the same obligation that all of our other members of the JPA. Now, we have taken, because you guys are fabulous, very proactive steps to figure out how to manage Corder Madera's retirement obligations going forward, but we have no authority and have no intention of taking these measures to try to make sure that Larksburg and San Onomoh do the same. Or, and we're in Clean Energy, there are 27 jurisdictions, and, you know, all the ones you guys are members of, I don't even know, they have multiple jurisdictions. I'm not so sure that I have a comfort, not that we, we may be stuck with this, Todd, but I don't have a comfort level that it's fair to make us jointly responsible. I think a several responsibility co extant with whatever our JPA involvement is. So if we're a one-third member of the Central Mountain Police Authority, I think that we ought to have that several responsibility of one- to have that several responsibility of one-third retirement obligations going forward.
For first.
So, so that is, so a key to the amendment, and it's a key point. So those words have been heard. Whoever got the league really pushed for this. So current JPAs in place, what they're gonna ask for is the apportionment, and they're gonna ask, they're gonna leave it to the member agencies to figure it out. So all of our JPAs that have this issue, it's up to the, so for instance, we're talking about CMSA, well, there's some unfunded pension liabilities in there. They're gonna leave it to the, this law, as it's currently written with the, as the amendments to nine days ago, they're gonna leave it to the member agencies. But if the member agencies can't figure it out, they're going to figure it out, them being CalPERS. And so that's not perfect either. Moving forward, all future applications, so all future JPAs, 2019 moving forward, will be joint and several. They will be attached to joint and several. So if you have a current JPA in place right now, you will not have joint and several, it's not retroactive back. What you, we will have, because none of our JPAs have this, even Central Marin Police Authority, and it is a good practice, you should have apportionment. So you should have some sort of formula that speaks to it. CMPA is one-third each.
But, one thing is, the only reason why there's all this unfunded liabilities is because CalPERS has overstated returns and understated benefit expenses, okay? So what legisla, what is in the legislation forcing CalPERS to do honest accounting?
This is one-sided. We're playing defense.
Okay.
You know what concerns me? Okay, right now, everything, you know, you can see parity between, say, JPA with, with San Anselmo, Larksburg, Corder Madera. And then all of a sudden, down the road, for whatever reason, one of the members of the JPA evolves into a Bell California.
Right, right.
And then, what's our liability?
It's not, so, so here, so as the law's written right now, and it's one of the weaknesses of, like, we just, we evolved, always assumed it, and we, but there should be a section, specifically speaking of this, it's apportionment. So if it's one-third, one-third, one-third in the Central Marin Police Authority, example, if whatever city or town stepped out and went bankrupt, didn't, they just, they left, they went, they went rogue on us, they're responsible for their one-third. We're not, because we don't have the joint and several language.
I thought that was in there.
That was in there originally. It was amended nine days ago.
I thought the amendment took away the retroactivity, but left in joint and several on a going-forward basis.
All new JPAs.
So not existing, pre-existing.
They got it out. They tried, so if you look-
How about the fire department? Is that a new, or is that a-
Well, the fire department's gonna have joint several. They won't allow.
So are we, are we good with, like, accepting Larksburg's liability on a going-forward basis?
I, I personally don't. I mean, that's just a personal thing. I think that we're responsible for our own finances, and I think that it is an undue burden on our citizens to depend on the reliability of somebody else's financial practices.
I will say that you have to do an evaluation of the likelihood of, of what would take place. And so if you look at it, and let's say, we don't do the governance that we should be doing as a, as a, as a town and the city, that's, we own a big part of that moving forward, because at this point, there's no excuse to have an unfunded liability for your organization when you start from scratch, when you start with zero. We're zero, we're zeroed out. And moving forward, if we screw that up, the first one we should look at is us. The second one is, if we, if we-
But Todd, I'm content. I think we're all content with accepting the responsibility that we screw something up.
No, what I was getting at is, that's my first one as a, as a, as a, when you're in a JPA. The second point is, what is the likelihood that we dissolve, so we separate? And the second one, the third one is, that that city or town would have to file bankruptcy. What are the odds of that? I mean, I think you have to do an analysis of that, and then you have to, you have to evaluate. I mean, going retro really took it off the table, but I'm just, moving forward, we haven't done that analysis, and what is the risk?
Well, you look at Bell, you look at San Bernardino, you know, I mean, they're-
Say that again, I'm sorry.
You look at Bell, or San Bernardino, where there have been fiscal disasters.
Make a motion to extend for half an hour. We're pretty confident we're done in half an hour, right?
Oh, okay.
Absolutely.
We have to extend a half hour.
Oh, second.
Councilmember Andrews.
Yes.
Councilmember Bailey.
Yes.
Councilmember Ravazia. Vice Mayor First.
Yes.
Mayor Condon.
Yes.
I have a real hard time with joint and several liability, and it's not necessarily because the agency isn't gonna be managing things properly. Because I trust you, Todd, to manage the fire department pension properly by using a 115 or whatever method you need to, to ensure that the unfunded liabilities do not get away from us as we, you know, the, the agency can forecast. But you have no control over CalPERS. That's one of the big problems. What if they have tremendous losses one year? Or what if something crazy happens with the economy, and all of a sudden, even a 6.2 assumed discount rate isn't adequate? Those are the kinds of things that it's, is very difficult for us to protect ourselves against.
Absolutely.
We also cannot necessarily protect ourselves against some dramatic event that might happen in Larksburg that compromises their town's finances through, through perhaps no fault of their own, but I'm concerned that that would then jeopardize our town's finances. So I don't quite understand why the League of California Cities is all of a sudden potentially ready to accept joint and several liability. That concerns me.
No one's trying to accept, and we're, I'm telling you that, at the end of the day, where this thing's headed, that's where it's gonna be headed, I think. And, and we're gonna do everything we can to fight it. It's just, that board right now is not unanimous, the CalPERS Board, on the support. But I'll just, I think that's the way it's headed. There's some tools in our toolbox, because here's the thing, we can't undo this. We're, we have to go down this path. Now, it's the mechanism we use. Do we form a JPA, and do we keep our Corder Madera employees and Larksburg employees? There's a way to do it. And then you basically loan your employees to the JPA by contract. There's another option for us, and it's to form a special district, a legislative district. And so we're putting things in place to, to look at that, and that gets us around this, because districts, they're not, CalPERS isn't concerned about districts because of the, because they fall under the LAFCO process when you sever. And so those, that is the route we are headed. But this is helpful for us to know of just your initial thoughts of how you feel ultimately about a new organization and a joint and several language moving forward, because then it just confirms how we've felt all along, that we're focused on two, two options at this point, really, and not using the, the JPA now as a model, a, a special legislative district. And it really would act like a JPA, but there's the mechanism in there of dissolving, falls on, separation falls under the LAFCO process, which CalPERS is comfortable with. Or option B would, we keep the employees and we contract them into the JPA. So those are the two options.
Okay. What I would recommend is you work with the League of California Cities to try to get every member of CalPERS up here for a tour of Central Marin Police and CMSA as two examples of how things really work.
I will tell you that you're our team, and it's just not, Corder Madera has done everything humanly possible within the state to really educate and do what we have to do.
Thank you.
So we're gonna continue to do that. This is a big deal for us.
Yeah.
It's a big deal, so.
Carla?
Yeah.
I think there's only two things. One of them, we've already accomplished, which is to indicate kind of our perspective. The second one is, with the addition of changes, I know Diane's a good writer, people have comments to the letter. Can we, can we send the letter?
Yeah. And I just had, just some little, just, you know, like punctuation, little grammatical things.
I had actually a couple of text changes, so.
So I'm okay with it unless they're substantive.
Is it substantive, or is it-
A little bit. It's just at the very end of the first paragraph where it says, "This bill will," and I suggest we put something like, "Compromise our ability to provide core services and endanger our citizens." I think it's really important to get core services in there, so they understand that this is really important.
Do we want to define core services, such as police and fire?
Well, that's kind of in the next paragraph, where it talks about sort of some of the agencies. And all I would recommend is, in that list of agencies, somewhere fairly up towards the top, maybe right after the fire department, we include Central Marin Sanitation Agency.
Oh, sorry, I just forgot that.
How could you forget this? Water treatment.
Okay. Rebecca, do you want me to read them into the minutes, or can I just give them to you?
Here's a good one.
Sorry.
And a couple of just sentence structure.
Yeah, I know, my grammar's mediocre, sorry.
So, what, just give them, give them to you? Okay. And if you, if you can't read all my little scratch, just give me a call on that.
I have one little, it's just I made a, my sentence structure's weak in one part. They are not, these are purely technical, they are non-substantive. My grammar is mediocre, that's all.
There. Is that okay?
Jim, did I miss any point?
Thanks, Rebecca. Okay, so-
I'd like-
He's still reading it.
And do you want to-
Yeah, I don't think there's any public comments.
There's no public comment.
I'll move that we approve sending the letter with the changes that I mentioned, some grammatical and typed corrections from Carla and Sloan. Anything from Jim?
Second.
Okay. Thank you.
Councilmember Andrews.
Yes.
Councilmember Bailey.
Yes.
Councilmember Ravazia. Vice Mayor First.
Yes.
Mayor Condon.
Yes. Okay, folks.
And thank you, Sloan, good letter.
Yes.
Always easy to make things dumber.
Okay. And then, this is the next item, 62.1, the ratification of subcommittee recommendation for appointment of one applicant.
We already did that.
We did that one. Oh, listen, we did that.
So 6.2.1.
I'm sorry, I'm, I'm on the wrong page here. This is the review and approval of final joint powers agreement with CMSA.
Thank you, Mayor Condon, members of the council. This is about a two-minute item. I think it's appropriate that we've been discussing JPAs here in the prior item. And what I think is, is important to know is that this came to you as five prior sets of revisions. There was one, what I would call substantive change since you last saw it, and it actually addresses this issue that we've been discussing in terms of JPA. So as you all know, now that CMSA and the three member sanitary districts are co-named in a permit with that same joint and several language, there was a lot of opposition to that. Ross Valley and Centerfell appealed that to the Regional Water Quality Control Board, and no action was taken by the board, therefore their permit was upheld as written. But what we did, what I think quite craftily, using legal counsel to be clear about what our intention was, was we addressed those concerns in the JPA. So if, if you're gonna read anything in here, I'll point you to page 10 of 15 of the redline version behind your staff report, and I'll go over sections F and B. So in section F, on page 10 of 15, in the redline version behind the staff report, we say, and all the other, by the way, all the other member agencies have agreed to this, and we're the last district to adopt it if we adopt it tonight, that the CMSA and each member will be responsible for its own obligations under the Regional Water Quality Control Board's permit and all future permits. So we're trying to make the statement that we're gonna take care of ours, and you take care of yours, and so we've all agreed to that. And then in terms of member indemnification, you can see the new red language in section B where we say, "Further specified in the NPDS permit and any subsequent permits, that members individually shall indemnify, defend, and hold CMSA and other member agencies harmless for any penalties, claims, or liability arising out of any acts or omissions of any individual member." So that basically means that if we mess something up, we intend to handle it ourselves, so does Centerfell, Ross Valley, and CMSA. So I think these are appropriate and substantive changes that you should all know about, and we look forward to any comments or questions you may have.
Okay, thank you, Peter. Yes.
I did want to point out one other change that was adopted by the CMSA Board relating to withdrawal. Sorry, I had it on the other page, but-
Page 1215.
Thank you, 12. Essentially, what this says is, we're not gonna figure out the details of how to deal with the withdrawal at this point, but we'll deal with it if one of the agencies decides to withdraw. For instance, Larksburg's currently a member to this, but they, you know, are kind of a remnant of the original JPA when Larksburg had its own wastewater collection system. They've since, of course, been annexed by Ross Valley Sanitary. But let's just say they wanted to withdraw. At that point, the CMSA Board and the member agencies would figure out how to deal with that. However, there was language added to this, saying that they will not get any money related to the withdrawal. For instance, it's the first sentence of the second paragraph under section 20, "The member seeking withdrawal from the JPA shall not receive or be entitled to any financial or other material compensation from CMSA and the remaining members relating to the withdrawal." For instance, they don't get to walk away owning a third of the assets, or something like that. The assets stay with CMSA. So that was to protect the remaining members of CMSA. I just wanted to point that out.
Okay, thank you. Okay, any comments, questions? We have no public, so no need to open it for public comment. On this one, it's, we're looking just to approve the final draft of the JPA.
Let me just question first, if you don't mind.
Yes.
Theresa, did you draft this, or did your firm draft this? Or what's the story with this?
We did not. This was presented to us by staff, and I'm gonna let staff talk about who drafted it, but we did review it.
Okay, I just, my, Peter, my comment is that the indemnification and insurance section, along with the prior sub-F to section 16 regarding responsibility for the run-on obligations, I'm not sure it accomplishes what you're trying to get done with that. If you say a sentence like, "The Central Marin Sanitation Authority and each member will be responsible for its own obligations," that does not exclude their responsibility for the other obligations. All it does is reaffirm, confirm, and expressly require them to be responsible for what they already were responsible for. It doesn't somehow relieve them from their responsibility to each other.
So the, I, I hear what you're saying. So the attempt here, and we may not have succeeded in it, was that the NPDS permit names us all as co-permittees. And so it basically says that all of the districts and CMSA are all on this permit, and you all must perform all these things. What we're attempting to do within our JPA is say, irrespective of that, of that permit, we're all committing to our own obligations and not to the obligations of the others. So, you know, your legal mind is obviously, that's what you do. It may not achieve everything we're looking to do. Theresa, I don't know if you want to weigh in, all the other member agencies thought it was helpful, at least.
So I, I agree, there are limitations on this language. It does, for example, if someone goes into bankruptcy, this is not going to limit bankruptcy, the federal bankruptcy rules will preempt this. But what this does do is, it allocates, and there is an indemnity provision, so that if, short of a bankruptcy proceeding, if there is, one member is going to be held liable, then there is a requirement of indemnity. There are some limitations on this language, and I have advised as such.
Okay, I mean, an indemnity provision gives you an after-the-fact opportunity, I'll call it an incoate potentiality, to get back some of the money you've had to, you've had to, well, you know what I'm saying, right?
Don't incoate us.
I mean, it's, you have a, you have a, there's a legal potential right that you might be able to, it does not relieve you from the obligation in the first place.
And I agree. And I think that to contextualize this, this really is in the context of capital project delivery. So if you keep that in mind, basically, you know, we are trying to agree as members of a JPA that none of us is responsible for delivering the others' capital improvements.
I'm not a, I, I- I'm not a, I think we got to do this probably, but I just, I think we ought to be aware that this may not be as clear as one might like in terms of the consequences in the event of liability.
Understood.
I'd like to point out two things. Number one, this council has already approved that language previously.
Oh, is that right?
Yes.
No, this language is new.
Oh, the indemnification?
Yeah, yeah. So we've made that change.
Oh, sorry. When was this changed? Because I thought this was part of what we had heard.
In March, it already went to the CMSA board, so you've seen it there.
But it didn't come back here?
No, the fifth revision didn't include it.
All right, sorry. CMSA, CMSA board saw it. We had, had gone through each section and it approved each of them, but I guess this was revised after that. Sorry, Sloan. But I also want to mention that the NPDES permit, of which we are now, each, each JPA member is a co-permitee, was appealed by Ross Valley and San Rafael. And I know that the deadline for the state agency to either accept or deny the appeal was, I believe, last week, and I haven't heard anything that it was accepted, so I'm assuming it was denied or just ignored, right?
It was ignored and therefore nothing, no action.
Yeah, so it expires, expired. So there has been some concern about the fact that each of the member agencies are now co-permitees. But getting back to what we just said about the sewer laterals and the influ- infiltration, if we don't address INI, the alternative is tens of millions of dollars to increase the capacity of the Central Marin Sanitation Agency water treatment plant, okay? The idea that the, or the, the purpose of the, these per, co-permittee requirements under NPDES is to shift the burden of reducing the wet water, wet weather water flows into CMSA to the member agencies, because that is where the problem is. The problem is not at CMSA. So that is why the state agency shifted some of the burden for reducing INI to the co-permitees. Unfortunately, it kind of makes things a little more difficult at CMSA, and that's why this is kind of a bit of a sticking point.
I'm just going to roll with it, it's fine.
Okay, so we're back to accepting the redline version. You always have a choice, Jim.
Uh, yeah, right.
Do you have any comments, any changes, any recommendations?
Since everyone else involved in this JPA has approved it, from a practical standpoint, I don't see where we have much of a choice, unless there's an overwhelming principle that we want to reopen the whole negotiations with everyone else.
No, I agree, Jim. I'm, as soon as you make a motion in so many seconds, then I will vote for it.
I'll move, we approve it.
Then I will second it.
Councilmember Andrews?
Yes.
Councilmember Bailey?
Yes.
Councilmember Vazia?
Vice Mayor First?
Yes.
Mayor Condon?
Yes. Okay, and then onward and upward, council and town manager reports.
Madam Mayor, members of the council, I'll give you an email update, but I want Peter to share an update, as this is all his doing, so some good news.
Uh-oh.
Oh, good news.
Madam Mayor, members of the council, we got a preliminary award letter from the Department of Transportation. We've been awarded $325,000 grant for climate adaptation. That is something that we put...
What, what do we do with that, all that money? What's it for?
That, that money will go towards a comprehensive and state-of-the-art analysis that will determine how we should address climate change, what infrastructure we should protect, how we should protect it, how we should prioritize those things. And so we'll probably hire a consultant to help us with that, and we'll use our staff expertise. One of the reasons why our grant was so strong is because we put $75,000 worth of staff in kind, time, and expertise into the grant. And so over the course of the next two to three years, we will have one of the first and best local climate adaptation plans in the county.
Great. Fantastic.
Very good.
Nice work.
Congratulations.
Very good. Okay, we'll start this in?
No, no reports.
Councilmembers' reports.
No reports, no reports.
Okay.
Well, I have 15, no, just kidding, no report.
Okay, Jim?
Wow.
No reports. I sent you an email about it.
Carla, come on, come on, you can do it! You can do it!
No, can't do it, can't do it. I got good news, too. I got good news, not so good news. Okay, good news first. The Intergenerational Center is going strong. We have 46 paid members, and since our last meeting, the Board of Supervisors awarded us a $10,000 grant.
Fabulous.
And the Health and Human Servi-, for the Intergenerational Center to do as what we would like.
Great.
And Health and Human Services Aging Division gave us an award of $5,000.
Nice work, Carla.
So anyways, we are very pleased. We're hoping in the end of June to open a Makerspace. We have had a, an offer of a donation of a laser cutter for our Makerspace. And so anyways, we're really doing well and getting some really great programs. Cutest, 15 of the cutest little preschoolers came in today for storytelling for preschoolers with seniors doing their stories. Very, very cute. Okay, this is though, the one thing that, that is important that I needed to share with you and with staff. I am vice chair of LAFCO, and the chair is right now on the big island of Hawaii, I guess admiring all the lava flowing. And I was not informed, but a couple of weeks ago, the administrative assistant for our acting executive officer, Rachel Jones, quit. She, she was in a temporary position and that she wasn't getting any assurance of permanent position, so she quit. And then Thursday, at the end of the day, I got a, an email from Rachel Jones that she quit.
Oh, so these people are like jumping ships, like rats?
Totally jumped ships. So I was trying to get ahold of Jeff Blanchfield, who is the, the chair, and couldn't get him until he called me on Friday, that he apparently was aware of this pending occurrence. But he's in Hawaii, so I've called an emergency meeting of LAFCO for tomorrow night, and Rebecca was kind enough to arrange that we will meet here in a closed session to determine what personnel issues are going to go forth with this. As you know, Keen Simons had left to go to San Diego County in August, and we have been waiting for the recruiter that the policy committee hired. I had nothing to do with this. And at any rate, how can I say this diplomatically? At any rate, the recruiter came down to five people that were potential candidates, and because of all this time lapse, it has now gone down to two. Everybody else has accepted jobs. And so anyways, it's been really stressful thing. So we are looking for administrative assistant, and we are looking for somebody to step in as probably a temporary executive officer until we can recruit.
Our staff has lots of extra time, I mean, you guys are up.
Somebody permanent, yeah, and everybody's got, yeah, everybody's got plenty of time on their hands.
What sort of budget does this organization have? What's its funding source?
Funding sources is partly the state, and then also the fees that come in for the various applications.
The studies and things.
And the county, also.
Like it's got a budget in the six figures?
And then the city, the city all contributes to the county, so we contribute, excuse me, towards the, the county.
But just as a quantum, I mean, it's good, is it in the six figures and the seven figures? How big is the budget for this?
Oh, don't ask me that.
Okay, no problem.
But I, I will say that, like, the executive officer gets in the six figures.
So this is well into the seven figures for an annual budget?
So, I mean, yep, I mean, we've got, you know, we've got the legal team working with us, and all this, the huge reports that go out, where oftentimes, we have to rely on consultants. And so anyway, it's, it's become a rather stressful thing, and so we'll, we'll see what happens.
Madam Mayor, we're going to reach out to some other counties and see if we can get some, a temporary support from Marin County, so I'll let you know tomorrow before your meeting.
Thank you so much. It is so much appreciated. On behalf of the whole commission, it really is appreciated. So we were able in, in short notice to get a quorum together, and so I'll keep you apprised. And then with that, let's move on to review of the draft agenda, and anything to comment or to add? So are we...
The operating budget that does not include capital spending, it's just, it's occurring?
Yes. And that's how our, our plan was, again, we met with the Finance Committee today, so we'll meet with the Sales Tax Oversight Committee on Thursday, and then we'll take just the operating budget to you at the next meeting. The capital improvements budget will come the following meeting, and then you'd approve both. So if there's any changes you want to make at the next meeting, we have, again, two weeks to make those and bring them back to you again. But there should be no surprises per our last meeting, going over this, kind of the, the decision points for you to think about as a council.
Great. Okay, thank you. Yes, Diane, and then Sloan.
Okay, under sanitary district item, you have a response to the civil grand jury report on consolidation of sanitary districts. It might not be a bad idea to kind of maybe touch base with, as council members, if you want.
Well, the good news is, honestly, it takes two lines, because CalPERS just kind of solved our problem, because there's no way you could merge sanitary districts at this point. You just can't. CalPERS, because that law right there preempts it, so really, there's nothing to talk about.
Do we have to?
You know, honestly, and that's going to be my response, so.
But we still have to respond.
Yeah, we, we have 90 days. I wanted this council, and actually Peter wanted this council to weigh in on it.
Definitely.
And so we have a, a heavy-duty agenda, but I think it's important.
Yeah, it's a heavy-duty agenda, so my only point was, maybe it would be worth some preliminary conversations if, if you have time and the inclination.
We can do that. I, I think we were going to take the simplest route. There's, a lot of the grand jury reports said, you know, begin immediately consolidation, that was a recommendation. You know, Todd's point is probably you can just write a one-page response or one, one-sentence response if you want, but, but yeah, we'll meet with you, absolutely.
Yeah, I, I just think, though, that it, that's important, that, that there was a lot of information in there that was really fraught with inaccuracies, and I think that that needs to be, to be really cleaned up.
I do, I'm just wondering if the, we'll work on it, I just, whether it be to the grand jury, or whether it be just a response from the town.
Yeah, that's what I mean.
Yeah, I think it's definitely important to clarify.
I thought it was just, there wasn't much depth to it, so.
Well, no, but there were also things that were really important that should have been brought out, and then things that were brought out that really didn't apply at all. So anyway, yeah, I would like to get through that. So then, this meets with everybody's...
Approval?
Subject to change.
It's a long meeting.
Yeah, I'm sorry.
Just one suggestion, can we ask, I don't know if it'd be Todd or Adam or somebody to do the Airbnb thing or the short-term rental thing? Just, what, like, where are we? Just a report?
Sure.
You can do it as part of the, you don't need to have like a presentation, can you just make it as part of the, or have Adam do a brief report or something?
Yeah.
I think that's good, because I remember, I've had people...
Not the next meeting, the following one.
What's that?
Not the next meeting.
Oh, okay, whichever.
The following one, because I think this is pretty chunky.
Yeah, yeah, I just mean, because I do occasionally get inquiries about that, I wouldn't mind knowing what the hell's going on.
We'll put it back on the schedule. And I'll just say that the AMEs, I sat in on the Planning Commission meeting, and I was pleasantly surprised at the thoughtfulness and on all sides of it. It really was a two-and-a-half-hour meeting. So if the meeting runs long and the council feels pressure, you can, no, we can just hear AMEs, and we can move the, the budget to the, the second meeting in June. If you can't make a decision, we can certainly move AMEs to the, you know, over two meetings in June. So we're completely flexible with the schedule, just stuff, we know we're running out of time, and so we're trying, our big ones are the capital improvements, you know, budget, sanitary district, our operating budget and AMEs, those are four that absolutely have to get done, and we believe we can, so.
Right.
But don't feel pressured that, you know, we're not trying to overload you, so.
No, and I think that, that just, you know, from the reports and reading with the, what went through with AMEs, it, we have a lot of, you know, information already out for us.
Then I would also suggest that if you think the sewer lateral ordinance is going to take up too much time, maybe put that off two weeks, so. And that way, it'll give you guys more time to pull together information about potential programs associated with that. Thank you.
Okay, are we good with that?
Yes.
Okay, any other comments? Otherwise, I will call this meeting adjourned.
Nice, thank you.
Yay!
It was fun, Amy, I got us there.